I call this regular council meeting to order. And the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. I would ask that Duncan give us a bit of an update on changes to the agenda. Duncan?
Sure, so through your worship, on April 6th, we received a presentation from Boundary Family Services Society. And it was a discussion regarding a proposal to provide some outreach services for a period of 90 days and asking permission of the city and wanted to discuss potential proposal and possible opportunities. Today, we received an email from Gina, the chair, and I'm just going to read it verbatim. Unfortunately, we were unable to get it on the agenda, but what she has asked for is, "Further to the April 6 delegation for B appearance of Boundary Family Services Society and the thoughtful probing questions asked by Mayor and Council that were a result, I would like to request that a decision of the City Council regarding 8A motocross update be tabled at this time. BFSS was and continues to be on a comprehensive fact finding foray as a result of VC Housing approaching the agency to explore outreach options to support unhoused individuals through the COVID-19 pandemic. The intention of Agency Operations was and continues to be to bring findings before the Board at a regular monthly meeting. As both city staff and governance are well aware, the issues are complex and the Board requires a thorough review of findings, a comprehensive discussion, and Director's Decision before proceeding. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Province of British Columbia is providing an automatic $300 supplement on each income and disability assistance check issued April 22nd, May, and June. This provincial response should provide some comfort to the recipients and local government. Thank you in advance for your City Council and staff's patience at the BFS Board of Directors and Agency Operations thoughtfully and rigorously working through exploring this potential service option. Stay well." So it is a request to, and I had used the word tabling, but Daniel says deferring would probably be a better motion, but essentially deferring this decision point until the Board has an opportunity to look a little deeper at some of the questions that Council asked and some of the other questions that they have.
All right, Council, can we have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified, taking out number 8A? Motion, Counselor Studley, Counselor Korlick, all those in favor?
Well, Mayor?
Comment, Counselor Moslin?
Sorry, Mayor, I was trying to, I had my hand raised. I was trying to get into discussion before the vote. I basically wanted to say if we table that, then we're not going to get back to the staff report that was included in our agenda. So is there going to be a point in the agenda now to discuss that staff report?
Counselor Moslin, I think the only spot that I can see is in your council report. I think there would be an appropriate time there for you to address some of the issues related to moto. I understand that you are interested in bringing up the issue of the Wellness Committee, and so I think, you know, moving forward, that would be addressed in your council report.
Okay, Mayor, thanks for the guidance.
Did we not amend the agenda to like to defer that 8A, which is the motocross update from our CAO?
I'm sorry, Counselor Thompson?
Did we not in our resolution for the agenda defer 8A?
Yes.
That's the motion on the floor?
That's the motion on the floor.
So therefore, in response to Counselor Moslin's concern, that memo will not be discussed at this meeting?
I think that the memo from our CAO could certainly be discussed since it was circulated.
Why do you circulate it?
Duncan, can you give us some kind of opinion on this?
Yeah, so through your worship, and I'll ask Daniel here in a second, but through your worship, the memo is in response to the request. There's a lot of information in that memo, and if Council would like to, you know, discuss some of the information in that memo, Daniel, is that acceptable under the new council business, is what I call it?
I would, if I may, I would potentially handle it slightly different. I wouldn't necessarily defer the whole item. If Council wants to talk about the report, the resolution, the recommendation from staff on the report was, I believe, to receive for information and discussion purposes. That still doesn't mean you're making a decision on what happens about motocross. If Council would like to keep the item on the agenda, I wouldn't defer the item. I would potentially say during the item then to defer other decisions until another meeting, just discuss the report if Council chooses so.
Okay, so for clarification, could the motion on the table be read back, please?
The resolution was to defer the item 8A and amend the agenda accordingly.
Just defer that part?
There was no motion other than to amend the agenda to remove 8A.
Can we just get rid of that?
Okay, so...
Yeah, just remove that letter from the agenda.
Yeah, just to move things forward, it sounds like everybody wants to discuss this. So the easiest way is to amend 8A, remove the Boundary Family Services request, and keep the staff report on there. So we'll still get to 8A, we just won't talk about Boundary Families' request, and we'll just talk about the staff report.
Okay.
That work? That's the modified 8A? Do you still have the motion on that?
Yeah, that would be cleaner. Yes, please.
So let's have that motion, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And seconded by Counselor Korlick?
Perfect.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried?
There you go.
Have to yell out if you're opposed. All right, so...
Counselor Moslin, is called his hand up.
Counselor Moslin? I thought that was a thumbs up from Counselor Moslin.
Counselor Zalinski does have his hands up.
I put the hand up, but no one sees it anywhere, so.
Yeah, mine was question of the minutes when we get there, just ahead of game.
Okay, so in terms of accepting the agenda as modified, then, this is separate? Motion to accept the agenda as modified with the previous motion. Counselor Korlick, seconded by Counselor Studley, all those in favor? All right, and we're moving down to the adoption of the special in-camera minutes from April 6th. Can I have that motion?
Don't move.
Counselor Moslin moves it. Counselor somebody seconds it.
I'll second it.
Seconds it, all those in favor? Carried, and moving to the next item, which is the April 6th, 2020 regular meeting, a motion to adopt. Counselor Zalinski, Counselor Studley seconds it, and discussion on this matter?
Question arising from the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to bring it after the motion, then, so we'll accept the minutes? It's not a change to the minutes?
No, no.
No, okay, so all those in favor of the minutes? Carried, and arising from the minutes, Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion that says industrial lift station, $125,000 for industrial lift station and a contract of $51,000, yet I see in our five-year financial plan, this project's still listed at $300,000.
I refer this back to Duncan for a response?
Sure, so through your worship, I'll ask Justin to comment on that.
Okay. So your worship, we discussed this originally when that motion came through. The original budget was $300,000, that's what was on the capital plan. $125,000 that was put through in the last meeting's resolution was just for temporary emergency repairs to get us through this fresh shed. And I say temporary emergency, meaning that actually some of those repairs will be part of the long-term solution as well. And if Council recalls, I believe that we figured that the total project value would probably come in around $200,000. So I could revise the capital budget at this time, but it'd probably be safe to go through at least the emergency repairs and see where we're trending before we do that.
So the repairs were done, and that won't be wasted money in terms of the overall, but that explains the difference. Counselor Zalinski, are you comfortable with the answer?
Well, no, because budgets are tight as it is. You know, if we know the project isn't going to be $300,000, whether it's coming from reserves or not, you know, we might as well put a $2 million tag on everything that comes through, because heck, it's extra money, we won't use it, we still have to prove for it. We've got to get tighter with our budget, I guess I'll leave it as a comment.
It's a timing issue.
Yeah, and so through your worship, it's a timing, it is a timing issue, and the budget does get amended throughout the year. And again, we really don't know what this pandemic is going to do to our pricing, and this is one of the first projects we've put out in the middle of this. And so, you know, in future, we're very aware of it, but we also need to be cautiously optimistic that our pricing isn't going to substantially change as a result of the current environment. So we have the ability to amend it later, but right now, the recommendation is to hold tight until we know exactly what's going to happen. It's our first real tender during this period.
So the comment is, and I'd just like to reinforce, that with the situation we're in with COVID and everything else, we don't know what's going to go on in the future, and we're just trying to steer the ship as best we can, but the fundamental thing is, we don't know what our future looks like right now. Is that what I'm hearing? Because I support that.
Yeah, so through your worship, I think you've wrapped it up very nicely, Counselor. It's, they're challenging times and different times right now, and this is really our first dip in the water, and this is really going to set the tone as we move forward with all of our projects.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on in this matter? Any further from those minutes? Business arising? Hearing none? We move on to our guest, Peter Kuchin. We have to vote on the minutes. Did we not vote on the minutes? No, we didn't. Yes, we did, we passed that, and we have business arising from that.
Okay.
Okay, so we are moving down to Mr. Kuchin, our ReCrem Holdings, and I'll ask for an introduction of this.
All right, we've got you, Peter.
And I believe we've also got, by telephone.
Yeah, and I think Eugene is on the phone as well, by telephone. Eugene is the owner for the property.
Right, so Duncan, would you like to introduce this to the table?
Sure, so through your worship, this is something Council considered at the last council meeting, and I see Kevin's pulling some of that information up. This was considered at the last council meeting. Council had some questions and determined that the best option would be to make a decision at that point, however, to extend an opportunity for this operator to address Council and answer some of those questions.
Council, taking note that this is discussion with Crem Holdings and the decision is later on in the meeting, so I open it up to comments from Crem Holdings.
Okay, thank you, your worship. My name is Peter Kuchin, and I'm speaking on behalf of, can you hear me at all?
Not very clearly, Peter.
I've got a different phone. Maybe my cell phone, can I try a loud line?
Yeah, you can try a landline.
Okay, we'll give that a minute, then, after.
I'm sorry, I'm gargled.
Yeah, I think Peter's voice is a bit rough as well today.
Yes, let me try to keep another level.
Kevin?
What if he called him from the same phone? That's good.
Then it wouldn't be on the Zoom meeting?
Yeah, well, I get it.
We get beat back and stuff.
It could work, that's back to plan.
Okay.
They want to move on. Go back to it. Mess with your world.
Okay, so we're just waiting for a moment for the delegation to call in again, and we're watching closely on the waiting room to see when that happens.
I see one of the problems we have with sound is that it often breaks up on us. I don't know, is that a reception issue?
It can be a symptom of the internet connection, especially if there's video running at the same time.
Right.
And...
Peter, can I hear you?
The other one, that one.
Yeah, Peter, I think we got you now.
Okay, terrific. I apologize for my voice, I do have a sore throat. I will talk slowly, hopefully that will be better.
That is better, Peter.
Okay, thank you. So I am speaking on behalf of the owners, Crem Holdings, as well as our tenants, our primary tenant, the service BC. We are requesting that you consider allowing the temporary placement of an aqua dam around the perimeter of the two buildings downtown. The reason that we are requesting this action are that the 2018 flood left us without subsequent flooded shirts. The cost of rebuilding, which was done in a timely manner, totaled over $1 million, a cost the owners cannot address on their own. We believe that in approving our request, the community will benefit by retaining a significant source of property tax revenue in downtown Grand Forks, it will retain significant daily occupants of downtown Grand Forks, and it will retain households in the greater Grand Forks area. We believe that by not approving our request, the result will be financial failure of Crem Holdings, a significant decrease in the use of downtown Grand Forks, not only by the tenants, but also their clients, and a distinct change in the character and culture in downtown Grand Forks. In conclusion, we request that the Council for the City of Grand Forks adopt a resolution stating Crem Holdings be allowed to establish a temporary perimeter, water-filled bladder, to act as a dam to restrain water from damaging their buildings and helping protect the downtown core. That's the why, the how, I have put together in that other page that is, I believe, up on screen now. Crem Holdings owns two buildings bound by Market Street on the north, First and Second Streets, East and West Side respectively, and an alley to the south, and it intends to establish a flood protection barrier known as an aqua dam surrounding the two properties of downtown Grand Forks by positioning a water-filled bladder as showed in the diagram. About 30 cubic yards of sand would be spread five feet wide, two feet deep, and about 80 feet long, enveloped its six male pali at the south end of the Market Street building, or pardon me, of the First Street building, Section C in the diagram. The dam will be comprised of eight 100-foot sections and one 50-foot section. Water requirements are about 6,000 gallons per 100-foot section. For a total of about 51,000 gallons, ideally access from fire hydrants. The time for deployment will be determined by the RDKB and its flood plan advisory. The dam will not be deployed until sandbagging has started downtown. With sandbagging started and stores and shops closed, foot traffic downtown would be greatly restricted. The dams would not be any more of a hindrance than sandbags. Flood waters recede, sections would be uninflated quickly to allow for a prompt reopening, probably help wash down city streets of silt. Cleanup would be completed expeditiously. Security vandalism left some concern. Crem has approached a private company to provide a regular nighttime patrol when the dam is inflated. Each section of dam consists of two impermeable tubes enclosed in a geotextile material. While the dam can be punctured, it is difficult to slash when inflated. The possibility of a blowout is next to nil and has not happened in the layfields the manufacturers experience. It's part of the design, it is an industry standard. Since there are two bladders, each bladder holds approximately 3,000 gallons of water, roughly equivalent to a pool 10 feet deep by 10 feet wide, by four feet deep, sorry, 10 feet by 10 feet by four feet deep. If all the water were to escape at once, it would likely not even reach across the street to the Bosch Bowl or the CIBC, while it might lap a Clives foundation before it dissipated. The dam's footprint is three feet wide, it's two feet tall, and its design prevents it from taking a rolling, and it does not require any anchors. To facilitate above, Crem Holdings seeks permission from the city to spread sand on city property, specifically at the south end in the alley in the parking lot. Sand will not be required anywhere else, and of course, we wish to access water for the city fire hydrants as required. Thank you.
Peter, to me, the critical part of what you're saying there is this would all be coordinated in terms of timing with the regional district's flood response, the EOC and other things that are happening in terms of the downtown core. That's my understanding. Council opening it for question?
Yeah, Peter, you're not requiring any anchors?
That is absolutely correct.
So they just lay on the sidewalk next to the building?
Yes. That is in the design, and there are no anchors. It has a broad base, and it's a wall hole, it doesn't need an anchor.
Okay, so why do you need the sand on the alleyway?
Because of the four-foot drop from parking lot level to the, or, there's a difference in elevation between the parking lot that goes back of Clives and the parking spaces on either side of the building. I refer to it as an annex. It's the building that faces First Street and subsequently the river. So we have a four-foot drop at the south end of that building, and we're putting in a two-foot dam, so we need to raise the dam two feet at that end.
So the second building, is that the one where, did that used to be?
Yes, yes, it is.
You own both of those properties?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, Council?
Counselor Zalinski, followed by Counselor Moslin.
Okay, I'm looking at that list of hands up, but I'll go with your directions. Counselor Zalinski?
I have more of a process question, and I'd like to get into some of this flood mitigation a little bit more, so I don't know if this is the answer or not.
Do you have a question for Mr. Kuchin, Counselor Zalinski? No?
Probably not, no, not him. I'll tackle the process question the other way. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Studley, your hand up next?
We've got Counselor Moslin and Counselor Korlick showing right now.
Counselor Moslin and then Korlick, thank you.
And then Krog.
And thanks to the clerk for helping us there with the order of speaker. Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Kuchin for coming to this particular meeting and putting this on the agenda again. There isn't a motion on the floor. Mayor, would it be, I proposed a motion at this point?
Actually, we put it on the agenda on purpose so that we can...
Yeah, it's for the...
...date on the agenda.
Okay, fair enough, I'd like to...
Providing any issues?
I believe that Mr. Kuchin's presentation, as well as his notes, reassure a lot of us on Council about the reservations we had with this proposal at the previous meeting. And I look forward to supporting a particular request, and I also look to a further discussion as Counselor Zalinski has a lullaby too. Okay, so thank you, Mayor.
And are there questions for Mr. Kuchin, clarifications of this issue?
We've got Counselor Krog and Counselor Korlick.
Counselor Krog and, I think Korlick was first and then Counselor Krog?
Correct.
Counselor Korlick?
Okay, I'm not sure who to address this question to, but 51,000 gallons of water from our fire hydrants, that comes from where? And do we have that capacity?
Question to Duncan?
Sure, so through your worship, I would actually have to ask Dolores, I don't know that she's seen this yet, but the hydrants are supplied from our potable water well?
Okay.
And I don't know what our flow would be, or if we have any draw restrictions.
I have the time to probably tell them.
Yeah, and so if Council wanted to move forward with this, there's two or three things that staff would recommend you include in some kind of form of agreement, whether it be license to occupy or not, whatnot, but it would be our ability to provide, you know, some of the liability pieces. We can talk about that when the question comes back, if you like.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Krog?
Yeah, a couple of things. My sound was cutting in and out, and I missed the part about the sand cleanup. So is that going back to Crem? So if they put down sand, the minute they're done, everything goes back to exactly how it was?
That is our expectation. It's our responsibility, we put it down, and it's our, we see it as our responsibility to remove it as expeditiously as possible.
So with such an agreement in hand, would you feel that it would satisfy your insurance issues and the timing would be coordinated with the rest of the emergency response plan, but that you would have some ability to move forward quickly in this circumstance if the need should arise?
Our intent is to move it expeditiously, to deploy, very much so. The whole idea of using something like the water barrier, we used dramatically less personnel to deploy and fill it. It's hours as opposed to days of putting it up, and it's, removal is also done very quickly. We would take guidance from the regional district as to the time of deployment, because it only makes sense. We don't want to be putting up this dam if we don't need to. I mean, ideally, I suppose, we're not going to use it at all, and that's our ideal situation. But when we have the type comes, and when that type comes, we're in a position to act on it very quickly.
Great, thank you. And further council questions on this matter?
Yeah.
Thank you, Krog.
Sorry, yes, when we were talking about the water that's required to fill the bladders, we fill our water trucks all the time from hydrants. So I'm pretty sure that our water truck is way bigger than the amount that would be required. Plus, we've had contractors filling their water trucks out of our things, so I can't see it being a huge deal.
The water supply should not be a big issue. Correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, because if you look at a tanker, and we do that all the time without an issue, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Krog. All right, counsel, is that sufficient in terms of information to move forward? Counselor Studley, sorry.
Yeah, we've got some people wondering if there's any risks to the surrounding neighborhood, because it sounds, but it doesn't sound like there is. It sounds like it would be not coordinated with the RDKB and all their, their suggestions or recommendations.
Right, are you comfortable with that, Counselor Studley? You are?
Counselor Moslin's hand is up.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through here to Mr. Kuchin, I just want to confirm that Crem Holdings has already purchased this 800 feet, 50 feet of aqueduct, and that they are storing it somewhere within the community?
Yes, we are in possession of the aqueduct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel, if that matter is covered, we'll address it further on in the meeting in terms of a motion. Thank you very much, Peter, for your presentation.
Thank you, your worship, and counsel.
All right. And counsel, moving further down to the next item of business, I see that we have also reports, and shall we start as usual at one end of the table? Counselor Studley for a change at your end? Any, any reports, Counselor Studley?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Easter Bunny and all the people that made his journey safe and secure, helped him get all the way around town to all the kids, and help make Easter something special for them. So all the people that helped make Easter and Easter Bunny happen, thanks again.
Excellent. Thank you, and Counselor Thompson?
You're muted.
I'm unmuted now. I, I also, along with Counselor Moslin, participated in the community action team meeting, and I participated in a chamber of commerce meeting with the regional district on flood recovery as it related to the downtown area. Some very good questions were asked and answered, and where the RDKB did not have an answer, they will begin back to the chamber. And I also attended the workshop that the RDKB put on for, for council with respect to their emergency plan and the directions that they're heading, which I found very interesting and useful. And also, they did point out that they will have information available to the public on their website. So at this point in time, I would encourage people who are interested in those acts to avail themselves of the regional district's website, and they will get the answers to those questions.
Counselor Thompson, I think it's frustrating for you, as it is for me, that we're sometimes told we have no emergency plan in place. It looks like a very comprehensive plan, and although we, we don't know the future, I think that we're planning for the worst. So thank you for putting it, Mr. Thompson.
Absolutely, and we are part of the regional district. We use their plan, we have an EOC office set up here when necessary, and I don't think it would be advantageous for the city to duplicate and start making their own emergency plan, because I think that the, the one developed by the, the regional district is very comprehensive. It includes everybody from Christine Lake right through to Creek and, and beyond, and I, I am very pleased that we are a part of their plan.
Great, thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Zelinski?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll just take this opportunity to ask through you to the staff a couple of questions. The, actually, it's just two questions. Back in March, we were talking about a workshop to look at the, our GIS system and understand what we have and what we don't have. I see we're booking meetings until September now. I was just wondering if we could have a date for that GIS workshop then.
And Duncan, can you respond to that?
Yeah, so through your worship, I, I'm looking through the resolutions. Daniel and I have been working very closely on kind of a task list. I didn't see that one on there, maybe I missed it, was that on there?
It wasn't a resolution of.
So that one, so that was a request to council then, sorry?
March, March 9th at the committee of the whole, I believe.
Okay.
We haven't gone through the committee.
Okay, so we'll dig into those, right now, one of the first tasks that I've undertaken is digging into resolutions passed by council and just checking some of the boxes and figuring out what's outstanding so we can move through them. So when I find that one, we'll be able to give you a better answer. I don't think we have anything planned at this date, though.
Yeah, and I don't think it was a resolution, it was just direction of staff to, I had some questions, they didn't want to give it to me, they said workshop was better, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Zelinski, you had a second question?
Yeah, I need some understanding, another one of these issues that seems to be sucking up a lot of oxygen, is the, the dip in the bank on the south end of the revetment in South Ruckel. For a couple loads of fill, I don't know what the hassle is about, but can you tell me why we can't seem to address it other than it's not an issue in our mind?
So through your worship, Justin and I were just talking about this not long ago, so.
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Zelinski, I, I agree, I think there's a risk there. I have brought it up in our meeting two months ago when I was meeting with the RDKB for their flood response, so it's on their radar. As for an action plan prior to a flood event, there is no plan right now to put fill there. I do personally believe that it would be a good idea if we could do that, but I don't know, Graham, if, no.
I think we call it on.
What's that?
I haven't been.
Yeah, so if, if we can do that, I think it would be good, notwithstanding Counselor Thompson's comments in regards to the RDKB having an excellent flood mitigation plan in place, I think with little effort, we could protect a fair amount of infrastructure there ahead of the game, so.
Do you have any idea of cost?
Costs, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of three to, $2,000 to $3,000, probably if you love to fill.
So Counselor Zelinski, to answer your question, it's, it's not on our radar, and we're, we're leaving it up to the RD. However, if you want to move that forward and take that on ourselves, you can make a motion, we have an idea of the cost, and we'll have to look at some of our mitigation funding, but we believe we could make it fit under that program, and we can move forward and do that if you want to make that motion.
And just as an add, Counselor, just as an add to that, I have actually been down there with the contractor to look at that specific issue as of three days ago, so it's, it's there.
So I don't know if this is the time to explain why something that's not in inevitable water, so it's not provincial, it's within the city limits, why wouldn't we need the RDKB okay to protect some of our creek bank?
Yeah, so through your worship, I don't, I don't think we need their okay, it's just an area I think that is identified, and I look at Graham and Justin as during a flood being a potential risk. We can, we can fix that right now ourselves if, if you'd like to, if council would like to take that on and not have to rely on them to protect that area. That would be a cost borne by us, and we think we can make it fit.
Yeah, I'm in support of that, doing that. I don't want to do something outside of RDKB, but I.
If I can get a second here, I'll make the motion that our city staff, I don't know how you want to put it, deal with the depression in South Ruckel.
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to put it that way.
Do you want a threshold on that, up to, up to $3,000, or if, if it's higher than that, bring it back?
Maybe we should say up to $5,000 to come from the electrical budget.
I like it, we need a, we need a location.
Electrical can afford it. We can put a, we can put a conduit in the ground if that helps.
There you go.
I'll second that for discussion. I just need clarification exactly where this dip is.
It's, it's right at the end of the revetment in South Ruckel, so where the new revetment kind of ends, there's a low spot there, and there's a culvert in that area, and if the river rises moderately, there is potential for the flood to come in there, and then obviously, as we know, it goes downhill from west east and can flow into South Ruckel, so I, I, yeah, I'm fully supportive of this, I just didn't want to get out in front of our flood mitigation plan, but I think that's an excellent, excellent idea to put some loads of fill in there.
And all I would ask for, through your worship, is a little bit of flexibility on the funding source. We are, we are trying to run things tight, and so just that ability to mix and mash where required to fund the project, whether it be DMAF or wherever we can make it work. Just joking aside, just giving us that latitude to be flexible.
Yeah, that was my, that was my thought, would this not be funded through DMAF, and maybe Graham can, can, can comment on that.
And the question, Counselor Thompson, is why wasn't it flagged before, and what were the rationales for not doing it as part of that plan? Because it was passed over, they did all of that work and didn't put anything in there, so there must have been some rationales on that.
I see.
Counselor Moslin waving his hand.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I did have a question before. I, I, just to answer the previous question, why wasn't it done before? Because I believe it wasn't a question of bank stabilization. Graham could certainly correct me on that. My concern for this depression and the exact location is what is the planned impact on Ruckel Beach and that grove of cottonwoods along the shoreline? Is that grove of cottonwoods within the declared works? I, I, and to speak to Counselor Thompson's concern, that certainly is the site of DMAF works. Eventually, there would be a dike, a trail dike constructed, instructed there if you went with the original plans submitted and approved for DMAF. So, you know, that ground is going to be trodden again eventually. My hopes have always been that we'd be able to hang on to the cottonwoods and put them on, have a setback dike at that point.
Is that true?
The groves of cottonwoods would be part of natural bank stabilization. You know, that's a, that's a detail.
Some of the cottonwoods are going to fall anyway because of erosion.
My question is, would this, would this work, what impact on, would this work have on those cottonwoods? Thank you.
So the specific.
I totally lost a picture here. Have I done something or review? Technical issue?
Technical, yeah.
I think everybody else has picture.
We can see you, Mayor.
Yeah, I can't see anybody, I'm not, I never touched anything on it.
We can answer that question, Mr. Mayor, while you're, while you're trying to get your screen back, if you like.
Yeah.
So, I mean, conceptual drawings, and as we get into the next phase, we're going to have a lot more clarity on, on where things lie, but there is an answer.
Yeah, I'll try and go back and make sure I touch and answer each of those questions. So specifically, is that area in the cottonwoods part of DMAF and the original plan? The answer to that question is yes. The specific, putting a few loads of fill for that depression that we were just talking about in this area, will that affect the cottonwoods as it sits there today? The answer to that is no, it's a pretty localized area. As for the longer-term plan to the cottonwoods, some of the cottonwoods I think are going to be lost no matter what, just because of erosion that's happening in that area, and they're already leaning into the river, and over time, you know, whether it's DMAF or just through natural occurrences, some of those cottonwoods are going to go into the river. But for the broader grove there, a lot of that will determine, be dependent on the final dike alignment, and some of that will be generated through some guiding principles that we're going to come back to council with, and Duncan can probably speak to that here in a second, and look for some guidance from council in regards to principles of how you want us to design some of these works. So, Counselor Moslin, I know you've spoken about having trail dikes and setbacks, and so that could potentially be a high priority item. If that's the case, then we would be looking at protecting some of that infrastructure at that time. Conversely, we have to weigh that against costs and alignment and a few other things. So over the next few months, we'll have probably a much better idea of what exactly is going to occur there.
And just for clarification, the decision point that's in front of you today won't impact?
Won't, won't impact the comments, so.
Okay, I still have no picture here. Any suggestions, or what I'm doing wrong?
Counselor Zelinski had his hand up, but maybe, maybe share your screen and see if that resets the display for. Okay, yeah, let me, yeah, okay, we're going to just try something here to try to bump everybody's screen, do a share, and then stop it, and maybe that'll reset things. Did that help?
So while you're doing that, just after the cost of it, I just want to make sure that it's company out of operations and not capital.
Okay.
Why is that, Counselor?
Counselor Zelinski, would, would DMAF capital be acceptable as well if it's an eligible project?
Yeah, just not our reserves, our own capital, it's DMAF or operations, one of the two.
Okay.
I think there's a good chance DMAF.
Okay.
Mayor, did that screen share?
Nothing has helped.
Did nothing, okay. You may check in the bottom of the task bar and just see if your screen got minimized. If you point down at the bottom at the blue circle with the white camera in it, maybe there's an option to, we could also possibly kick him out and then back in. Okay, that would be another, and the other option would be that we could disconnect you and then have you rejoin the meeting, and that might reset everything as well, so.
Okay, I'm sorry to cause this trouble, but I don't believe it was my fault.
We're to the part that we still have to vote on that resolution, right?
Yeah.
Can we have the resolution read so that we can be clear on what we're going to vote on here?
Sure. That city staff deal with the dip at the end of the revetment at South Ruckel to be funded from operating or DMAF?
We have a second here on that? Okay, I'm back. I don't know what you did.
Kevin, is there a better word than deal with?
That was the word that was used, so we could certainly, we'd certainly rephrase that for you.
Repair or fix.
Mitigate flood risk.
Sure, mitigate flood risk.
Mitigate, mitigate flood risk?
Twenty-twenty flood risk.
Ability or whatever you want.
Mitigate twenty-twenty flood risk.
Twenty-twenty flood risk?
Yeah, I'm sure you'll come up with.
And I, I understand Counselor Moslin's concern that we see the big picture here as to why it wasn't identified, what are the details of, of what decided to not put fill in there, because it has been on the table before.
I don't have a history.
Further on that motion? All those in favor? Carry. All right, thank you, Counselor Zelinski. Any further, Counselor Zelinski?
No, I'm done, I'm pretty much finished.
Okay, and moving on to Counselor Krog. You're muted, Counselor Krog.
Oh, sorry, no, I was just raising my hand about.
Okay, you're back to muted. Oh, I see, okay, you didn't have a further question. Do you have any council report, Counselor Krog?
Not at this time, but big kudos out to the community for the way it's reacting and, and supporting each other, but it's pretty awesome how they're getting their stuff together.
Absolutely, it is. And thank you, Counselor Korlek. You're muted, there you go.
Yeah, but I want to thank Daniel for responding to the boundary museum's concerns about having their funding revoked. There was a little bit of sweat without one, so thanks very much for reassuring them, I appreciate it very much. And I also agree that our community is doing a great job at responding to this COVID-19 issue, and I just hope we stay safe, all of us, so. That's all I got on a council report, but just to let you know, I do have lots for RDKB and them.
And we will have that one next, you're right. Separating the two reporters, thank you.
Well, actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we combined, because this, this was going on several times here, we actually, the resolution that we put together here for the council reports is also to combine the council and council representative to the RDKB into one report, because it kind of got jumbled up together anyways over the last couple of meetings, so if Counselor Korlek wants to speak to the RDKB, we're good to go.
Well, let's finish the council reports and then go back to Counselor Korlek so she can keep it separated on her paper.
All right.
All right, and Counselor Moslin is next.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I do have a written report, you know, once again, it'd be odd about submitting a written report, it has to be. that has to be written six days prior to the meeting. So some of my, my points are eclipsed by events, even since I've written this. For example, the first one, where the provincial government has to allow municipalities to run a temporary deficit budget, and that is only going to defer the debt, you know. Yet the provincial government has come out in the last week with some significant announcements that will impact the city's ability to borrow money and defer tests. I'm sure we'll hear more about that. I did, I did attend the Recreation Commission, just a quick point about that is that, that at the time of the meeting, April 9th, they were making adjustments in staff assignments. They had closed the pool, and they were, you know, anticipating that the drop in services would help, uh, cover some of the lost revenue. Uh, as Councilor Thompson pointed out, I did also attend the Community Action Team meeting prior, on April 9th. And, you know, that was kind of interesting, because at that time, at that meeting, was the first I'd heard about other communities and how they were responding to the pandemic with the homeless population. And, uh, so that was kind of illuminating. And then the following, within a day, I was hearing more details about, uh, PC housing, purchasing, purchasing so much as renting or providing motel rooms for that community, and how other nonprofit organizations within the province were organizing resources for that, as well as the interior health and the revision to the old, uh, the old way of Agonist treatment, which I have written there. Anyhow, I, furthermore, to my agenda, or to my report, is the question of the Wellness Committee. Prior to COVID, of course, the, uh, the Grand Fork Social Services Advisory Group was meeting regularly and was still handling several things. And then when the COVID came upon us, of course, the pit count was canceled and meetings were suspended. But at the time, the thinking was that there would be no need for that committee to meet again, because a higher level committee called the Wellness Committee was going to meet and guide, uh, the, the community through, uh, the pandemic and the recovery, or as some call it, the hammer and the tans. Anyhow, so, but that Wellness Committee meeting has never really been called. And so we had to have staff inquire, inquire about Mr. Pratt. Mr. Pratt did come back in a letter and basically, uh, saying that he would call a meeting if items could be added to the agenda, and a meeting would be called. And I'm asking, I'm trying to feel, feel on council this afternoon, is not, is whether or not would council would like to initiate a call of a Wellness Committee.
Do you like to pause there for a moment, Counselor, and get some response from council?
Yeah, certainly, Your Worship, thank you.
Counselor, on the table is the question of going ahead with the Wellness Committee. We have Councilor Thompson and Moslin as our appointees to that committee, but I certainly feel an urgency at this point to get a larger, more, broader community input on some of the questions of an outreach program and the other things that face us in the next couple of weeks.
We've got hands up from Counselor Zalinski, Thompson, and Corle.
Okay, starting with Counselor Zalinski, then Thompson and Corle. Counselor Zalinski?
Muted.
And I'm not doing that, so I don't know what's going on there. Uh, two, two questions, um, for fellow councilor. I'm a little confused, the Wellness Committee is the same as the Grand Fork Social Services Group, right? Okay, do we have terms of reference for this Wellness Committee there?
Councilor Moslin, do you know anything about the terms of reference?
I do know a lot about the terms of reference for the Social Services Advisory Group, but I, I do not know much about the Wellness Committee, Mayor. You know, I, I was, my assumption is that many of the social services that were involved at the other, uh, committee level would reappear at the Wellness. And I, 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 in fact, I'm hoping that, you know, with our, if council will move ahead in that, that we can, you know, provide a terms of reference to it, at least see one done. You know, I, I was, I was just reassured, you know, a few weeks back, that this Wellness Committee was going to be, never met. So, okay, uh, do we, do I sit, do we sit back and wait? The, the community response that I have to echo has been, has been good. I'm hoping people can continue to hold out and make the social connections through physical distancing. But I, but complicated, but recovery is going to be complicated.
Sorry, Counselor Moslin. Counselor Moslin, so, so basically, we don't know what the Wellness Group is going to do? We have no idea. So you're going to call a meeting, but you don't know what you're supposed to accomplish, or?
No, Mayor, Counselor, I was going to ask you guys, Council, what items would you like to put on the agenda?
Well, yeah, I don't know what the group's supposed to be doing, so I'm lost there. But I'll, I'll leave that for discussion for another day. My real big question is, is our, our rec facilities. We, I haven't heard of any layoffs at the RDKB. We know that revenues at the rec facilities are a big portion of the budget, and we're just about to approve our budget. Any word whether they're going to change their requisition, anything? Right now, they're asking for 1.5 million from the city. Any changes to that?
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thank you for the question. At this point, you know, the shutdown occurred for the arena right when it was shutting down. So that, that process is still continuing. We don't have a lot of impact. Aquatic staff, aquatic center staff have been reassigned to maintenance issues within the building, kind of hoping that what they can do is if the building is closed now, they won't have to close it at the end of summer for the annual makeup. So right now, it's steady as you go as per the requisition. But, you know, depending on how long things have to remain shut, I can anticipate that there will be more, there will be, eventually be changes. But right now, you know, they've sort of rescheduled in, in the hopes that this shutdown, they're going to be able to reoffer services within a couple of months. I guess that was the thinking last time I was at the meeting. You know, there's a lot of movement afoot, you know. Any help, thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Corle, I think, was waiting.
No, I think it's me.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Thompson.
To go back to this Wellness Committee, um, I don't even know who sits at the table. I know that, um, that it's led by Darren Pratt. I know that Counselor Moslin and I, I'm the city's voting rep, and he's the scribe, the minute taker. But that's all I know. I don't know who sits at the table. I, and again, um, to, to echo Counselors Moslin and Zalinski, don't know what their terms of reference are. And I, it's, uh, I think we need more information before we start putting items on an agenda. Because if there's things that we can be dealing with as a council, then I think we should be dealing with them. And if the Wellness Committee, uh, wants to become involved, they can let us know. But I mean, to me, this is just, you're just, they're just, I don't know.
I understand that in Counselor Moslin's contact with Boundary Family Services, the answer was if you have some items to put on the agenda, we can call a, a meeting. And so there was a request on our inside information from Counselor Moslin for some ideas to move that forward so that there would be an opportunity for Mr. Pratt to call a meeting. So I, my feeling is we've got to get together and have a meeting. I know some of the people on it, Counselor Thompson. The RCMP are on it, Whispers of Hope are on it, the hospital is on it. Most of the major service providers will be at that table. I think we can further clarify their terms of reference once we sit down. Other than that, we can go to Boundary Family Services and ask what their original terms of reference were. But I think it's really important to get that meeting called as quickly as possible. We're operating without the input of the community, and I think you'll agree that the SAG committee was certainly our best indication of where the community stood. So this would basically move into a position of, of that role in our community of input for decision makers.
Do you know whether or not they have had any meetings?
No, they have not had any meetings.
So they, they formed this group and done nothing?
Okay, but this group was formed a long time ago. This was a standing group that met occasionally to deal with issues that they identified, separate from the SAG group. And so once the SAG group went through that period of, of being basically shut down, it was suggested that the Wellness Group could fit that role in terms of community input. The RCMP are on that, and again, most of the service providers from SAG are actually on that group, from what I understand. Counselor Moslin, can you clarify any further?
I, I don't know, Your, Your Worship, I, I, you know, I, I certainly hear their reservations. I, I'm really hoping that we, what we could do if we did request a meeting is that we would, you know, get the group together and many of these items could be clarified, that is, the terms of reference, who's on it, and what the tasks are. I, I, I agree with you, Mayor. We do need at some point, some table where the, you know, the social services get to interact as we deal with this. The pandemic is complicated. I'm apprehensive that recovery is going to be even more complicated. Anyhow, so I would like to see a, a table form. I do agree that it's, that expedience is, would be necessary. Any help, Mayor? I, I stand ready to help make that happen if council wishes. You know, the understanding is, Mayor, is if council doesn't think that it's a good idea, then, oh, okay. I'll wait for this group, wherever they are.
I think we have some other hands up there before we put a motion on the table, Counselor Corle.
Okay, I am confused too, because from one minute we have the Social Services Committee now not seeing to just disappear in the wind, and then we move into this Wellness Committee that is, I don't think anybody knows what's going on with that. And to me, it has no status or anything. And, and you're saying it represents the, um, service providers of the community, but is it actually representing the community like the SAG Committee did? I, I find this very strange, that something that seems to be so important to do for our wellness of our community is just sort of floating nowhere. So I, I'm with Counselor Moslin. I think something, if you're, if this is going to be an existing committee, then something should happen with it, not just say, well, we'll put it over here until such time that something. But in the meantime, we'll do something else that really will just take on ourselves to make someplace well? I, I don't know, it makes no sense to me. I mean, it's just, there's just no direction, there's nothing going on with that.
So you're supporting that?
That it seems like it may just be, well, nothing's really happening, so let's just take advantage of that situation and kind of do what we want. And that's kind of weird to me, I, I, I just, that probably was actually, anyway.
Counselor, you're urging us to call a meeting then and move forward?
Well, I think, I think it's necessary, because otherwise, what's the point in having a committee?
I agree, I think it is important that we move quickly on this. And we're, Counselor Moslin, we're back to your report here, so it's your floor.
No, I've got my hand up.
Counselor Thompson and Counselor Zalinski.
Drop right in. Counselor Thompson?
Uh, I have to agree. I think, uh, what we need to do, um, is, but I thought, I thought Counselor Moslin had some items to put on an agenda. And, um, uh, I would encourage that we, we put that forward and have a meeting as soon as we can. Um, and if they don't have the terms of reference, let's discuss the terms of reference. I never did get the terms of reference for the SAG group, although I asked for them several times, but they never were forwarded. So, um, I don't know if, if, uh, we could impose on Duncan to contact, um, Darren to ask for the terms of reference so that he could forward it on to the, to members of council who are on that committee? I don't know. If, if that's not an appropriate way, if that's fine, maybe Counselor Moslin or I could contact Darren, whichever is preferred.
Counselor Moslin, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Thompson. I'm sorry, I could certainly forward to you the terms of reference for the SAG group. Uh, and probably should have, I guess. So Mayor, really, can I form a very simple motion to start? Move that, uh, council initiate, or, oh, sorry, move that council request that Boundary Family Services initiate a Wellness Committee meeting as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Does that solve?
It doesn't, I think, you know, we've, I've spoken to Kevin, and it sounds like the city would be willing to support that Zoom meeting.
Yep.
Further discussion on the motion? Counselor Zalinski?
So what's the best thing here, to raise our hand on, on the thing, or raise it in the video? Because I think a few of us have been sitting there floundering at times. What's, what's the best?
It would be helpful if I could see that hands up list that I had before, is that?
Mayor, if you click on the bottom to where it says manage participants?
It says participants on your screen.
Oh, sorry, on yours, it'll say participants.
Okay, I've got it, thank you very much.
Okay, so, so I'm hearing that this Wellness Committee is a standing committee, so there should be a terms of ref in some place if it's been around for years and years. But also what I'm hearing is it's not a city committee, it's Darren's committee, it's a Boundary Family Service Committee. Do I have that right?
That's my understanding, Counselor Moslin?
Yes, Counselor Zalinski, that, that's as much as I, you know. I, I really feel there's a plate, we need to, the different agencies need to be talking about this. I, I know they have been at different levels at different times. You know, we are talking about something that may be reopening schools in May or June, you know, like, okay. That's pretty complicated, too.
Is this a COVID issue, or, or what? I, again, without these terms of reference, which this group's been before COVID, so I don't know where it sits, it should be sitting someplace. And I guess my point of this, and I'm going to, I'll, I'll bite the tiger in the butt here. The perception here, people, is, oh, we want to get C4 off the SAG Committee, so we'll start another committee to deal with this issue. Because that's the perception out there that I'm seeing right now. So I sure hope that this is an old committee with an old terms of reference that we can start with. Because you're right, Counselor Moslin, these issues should be handled. I think they should be handled by the community, not necessarily just the Social Services Group. But, you know, those things, however it comes, whether it's from your committee coming back to council with recommendations, there are issues that have to be dealt with. It's just this shuffling of chairs and tables gets people a little concerned what's actually going on behind those doors.
And Counselor?
I, I agree with you, Counselor Zalinski, that's my thoughts on that.
Anything further, Counselor Corle?
No, just that I agree with, with Counselor Zalinski.
Could you summarize what he said?
Yeah, that he feels that, um, the general consensus or ideals in the community are that this other group has been maybe formed. And if it was formed before, there should be terms of reference. If it's new, the thought is to get some of the other group off, the C4 group in particular, and then go forward. So, and so it's just a mishmash, but I agree. I think it's, it's all perception, and if it was terms of references, there's been a standing committee for some time, then it should already be in place. If it's new... committee for some time, then it should already be in place. If it's new, there's issues to be done with that. And it is a community, not a council. Definitely.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Krog, you have the hand up next, and then back to Thompson. Counselor Krog?
Yeah. Everybody hear me?
Nice class.
Okay, my internet is doing some crazy stuff. It's kicking out and everybody's all kind of garbled and stuff, but I didn't want to leave and then try and get back in. The SAG committee hasn't been shut down. It's just on hold till COVID. So I would assume that this one is, would be the same. It would be on hold till COVID was over. So members of the committee are saying, no, it's not shut down. It's just on hold. The SAG committee.
Yeah. Through you, Mayor, if I could respond. That's my understanding too, Counselor, that the SAG committee has just been suspended. It would have been my advice to Mr. Pratt and to anybody, we didn't need a new committee. We already had one formed, which included community groups as well as FBOs, as well as service providers. But, you know, I just would like to see us move forward. Love your cap.
And Counselor Thompson, you had your hand up again.
Yeah, my concern is if there is this Wellness Committee that was formed some time ago, why wasn't the city included? That's the question I'm going to be asking.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Corlick? Mute it. Mute it, Counselor.
Well, and I also needed to lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay, so no more questions on that. And we're back to Councilor Mazlin. This is your council report. So any further items on this?
Mayor, did I get something on, did I get a motion on the floor there, Mayor?
Did you?
I thought I get.
Was it?
The council requests that Boundary Family Services initiate a Wellness Committee meeting as soon as possible.
And Counselor Thompson seconded that?
Correct.
Okay, any further comment on that? A lot of questions to answer.
Yes, one further comment. And yes, just echoing another comment, that we already have a committee. So why would we be trying to start a new committee or even resurrect an old committee? Doesn't make sense. There's already an existing one.
Okay, thank you. And to close it off, Counselor Mazlin on that topic, I don't know if.
Your Worship, yeah, I, these questions are in my mind too. But I think that council must see that we, there is a need for some sort of coordinate planning that includes the public. As for the C4 group, yeah, I certainly do not wish to exclude them at all, although, you know, like a lot of groups, I do see them going through a metamorphosis too. And perhaps if we, if council will adopt their motion and request that Mr. Pratt initiate this, maybe he will just go back to the previous terms of reference at the previous committee. That would be good. I would have no problems with that. But I don't want to get fussed up with the details of what it's going to look like, because I really think there's an overwhelming need that we, a coordinate response within our community go forward.
As soon as possible. All right, the motion's on the floor, and I see some urgency to this, so I certainly hope that we support it. All those in favor? Opposed? Oppose, Counselor Zelinski?
Opposed.
Counselor Krog. Thank you. Motion is carried. And having done this, we're flipping back to Counselor Corlick for the regional district report, and then we'll accept all of the reports together. Counselor Corlick.
Okay, thank you very much. So the last, I'm kind of with Counselor Mazlin in this. I never get my reports in because they're always, I don't know, seem to be just after the deadline to return reports. Anyway, last RDK meeting was April 16th. And at that point, Don Appesman from AM Ford, your presentation, requesting funding for transportation and delivery service during COVID-19. This is in partnership with United Way. So AM Ford would provide four vehicles, three for Trailery and one for Christina Lake, Grand Forks, and West Boundary, to deliver goods to residents, to provide pickup and drop-off services for medical appointments, grocery shopping or prescriptions, volunteers to be organized by United Way. And AM Ford would help, with help of Midas, is installing protective plastic between the driver and the passengers, not plexiglass, because I guess plexiglass, if there was an accident, it gets, I don't know, it's in the way of airbags, so it has to be plastic somewhere. And all the vehicles will be detailed with logos of sponsors. And the RDKV was asked to offset half short-term lease of $300 per vehicle per month for six months, to be reassessed at that time. So further details will be provided at our next meeting, which is on the 30th, I think. So that was an interesting thing, and I thought quite generous of AM Ford. They did lots during our flood, and here they're stepping up again during this emergency. And then there was an update on the COVID-19, and of course, we get updates every day, so these were behind. But it was nice to know that we have a 41% vacancy in the hospitals, just for general beds, and 54% in ICU beds through the province. So I think that's a good thing to know, that we do have room. Hopefully, never leave it, but it's there. And we had a fresh update, but we've had a number of them, which agreed one on Friday, so I'm not going to go into that. A little bit more on the Kettle Falls Railway. So Interpol is in discussions with the railway, and RDKV will continue compensations with local industry and railway. And I kind of think that we're doing that too. I'm not positive, as is council. So, and our UBC Well Fire Act is now in effect regarding category two and three burning, and I'm really glad to hear that. There is another thing that came up, and it was an interesting one. It was about cost of healthcare in rural areas. And that was in regards to the fact that if you have a specialist appointment, you need a Colona or Vancouver, you have to foot the cost of transportation, possible accommodation, for maybe a five-minute appointment. You'd sit in the office for an hour and see your doctor for a minute or two and say goodbye. Or, and so there may not be any compensation in return for those expenses. Or if there is, sometimes the trips are last minute. You just, you know what it's like. We live in the Boundary, where everywhere you go, you had all these additional costs for a five-minute appointment. And so with COVID-19, a lot of it's been done by video conferencing, and it's a great way. I had one of those in last week, and it was awesome. And I think that, I think this may be setting guidelines for future, for the doctors perhaps to receive same-level compensation for a video conference, rather than you or I having to drive all the way to Vancouver, Colona, or something for five minutes. And I don't know about anybody else, but that drives me crazy. So there has been a bit of talk about that, and that may be coming. One of our directors had a conversation with Katrina Conway regarding that, and she suggested a letter voicing our concerns be submitted to Mr. Jigs, and that this also may come up at UBCM. Because it is, it does run expensive because of where we live. Anyway, so there is, that's kind of, was brought forth the other day. And then our organic diversion project in Grand Forks, and that is our landfill site. So in its to this diversion is to upgrade composting operations at the Grand Forks landfill site, to expand RDKV organic processing capacity to include food waste material, and to begin food waste collected from greenwood. And this will, the whole setup will primarily process food waste, wood, and garden waste. And it will create a class A product for use in landscaping, erosion control, agriculture applications throughout RDKV. The funding is in part by government in Canada, probably from the BC through Low Carbon Economy Leadership Fund, Organics Infrastructure Program. Anyway, it's, I think, in a great project, and we all have, we have these big landfills. The estimate of organic waste processing capacity is approximately 4,000 tons a year. And you want further information, you can look at page 60 of the 300-page agenda. So that will be kind of, I just find it quite interesting to see what the prospects are and the fact that it is a good way to do our recycling and get up to speed in some of those things. So the grant in aid, there were several approved. However, a couple pertinent to West Boundary, the Grand Forks Farmers Market Nutrition Coupons, $2,000 from Area C and $5,000 from Area D. And further, Boundary Museum is also receiving $5,000 from Area D. Then, and I know that everybody received and read their requisition form from RDKV, as well as the hospital. It doesn't look like costs are going down anywhere, so I'm glad we were able to do things at city level. That was good. And another, second meeting or another meeting was the BCDC meeting on April 7th. Tourism update, marketing has been paused while travel restrictions remain in place. The Boundary Country 2020 Travel Experience Guide will still be published and distributed, and the Boundary Country newsletter will also be published with updates regarding COVID-19 and anything else pertinent. Another interesting thing, BC Timber Sales, the annual authorized cut in the Boundary area is 285,000 cubic meters, and it costs $45 per cubic meter for stumpage. And I think they are starting to investigate and look further into selective logging, because it is being considered in some areas, and that may, well, may alleviate some people's thoughts and feelings. BC Transit, it's always a big thing in our area. So the RFP was left open, as there are currently no applicants. And has been confirmed with IHA, that status quo will be maintained for the time being. So nothing's changing right now. And that's particularly since we're in the midst of COVID-19. So status quo will be maintained. Kettle Falls International Railway has issued their intent to discontinue operations of all lines in Canada, and they've given a three-year notice, closure, a closure, has been filed as of March 26, 2020. So I think all interested parties are certainly paying attention to this and, and in different conversations. The Boundary Country Veterinary Service, the move has been delayed because of COVID-19. The renovations are on schedule. Our inspectors from Vancouver are unable to conduct the appropriate inspections during this pandemic, and as well as social distancing, which may prevent actual move to current location. So their lease has been extended where they are right now, until such time they can move and do everything safely and everything inspected properly. And I don't know how many of us, everybody's in, knows about the Food Hub project in Rock Creek. That's the new building that's being built across the river as you drive into Rock Creek. And it's Vicky G., that's her project. And there's a possibility of, further on that same idea, there's a possibility of developing a lab for market gardeners on the GF side. And the possible location is in McCourtog Village, location up on, on the backside of Hartingview. And there has been $150,000 donated for this particular service, which I think is quite interesting and very good. The Ministry, I'm going to say Forest, but I'm not sure what it is, sent a letter of confirmation for a $500,000 grant towards scaling up of meat sector in the Boundary Country. So there's no details yet, and terms have not been determined. Okay, that's it for me this time.
In terms of any other questions?
Okay.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question, Counselor Corlick. Last fall, we partnered up with the RDKV for a housing needs report.
Yes.
I could be wrong, but I haven't seen it. Do you know where we can get a copy?
Actually, I don't think we've seen it either yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I have no idea, but when I get it, we will.
Thank you.
Good question, Counsel. Hearing none. Can I have a motion to adopt the reports from council and the regional district report? Counselor Studley and Counselor Krog. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor. Carry. Okay, that moves us down to the issue of a decision on the cram holdings request today. And without further introduction, I think we've beat this around quite a bit. I'll open it to comments, discussion, and a potential motion. So opening it up to first comment. And I don't see any hands going up. I do. Rod Zelinski, Counselor Zelinski.
So we're talking about cram holdings?
Yes.
So the process question I had is, I see where he's going to get his direction from the RDKV. So correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe someone can help me out here. Once council, mayor and council declares a state of local emergency, that's when we basically hand things over to the EOC. And it's the people running the EOC that basically has control of our city. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
So through your worship, and I think Graham's already stepped out.
He's on the call.
He's on a call right now. George, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, I can try to answer that. So can I, you repeat the question, Counselor?
So I guess where I'm getting at is, if a state of local emergency is declared, we do not have any control over our city, and it would actually be the EOC that would say, yes, Mr. Cooch, and you can put up your bladders.
Well, hold on, sorry. I'll jump in on that. Mr. Cooch and this request is going to require some form of an agreement, because it's going to be set up on city property. So council has that ability. If you want to grant this request, we can tie that into a form of agreement as to when that happens. And we can coordinate it with the flood response plan. So that's really up to council. And our recommendation as staff is, there's a couple things you'd want to rope into an agreement, including any liability. I don't think council would like any costs as a result of this to be borne by the taxpayers, so you have something like that in there as well. The availability of water, and you don't want this to conflict with any activities that we may have in response of a flood either. So those technical details can be wrapped up in an agreement, and we can even wrap up when this can be set up within an agreement. If that answers your question, Counselor. Sorry, George.
What happens if the EOC comes back and says, no, this is a detriment to our plan, please get rid of it?
Yeah, so through your worship, that's where any decision you make today would hopefully be in principle, and contingent on, you know, alignment with the bigger plan that protects the city, and in alignment with making sure there's no liability to the city and all those other pieces. So we can, we can wrap that in, and I would recommend you wrap that in for sure.
Thank you. And we have some people waiting. Counselor Thompson and then Mazlin.
Yeah, just a quick question. So this proposal and the request of councilors to approve So this proposal and the request of councilors to approve it, the issuance of a development variance permit. Would an agreement be attached to that outlining all of the, or would that be a separate item?
So through your worship, this one isn't the DVP actually. That's the next item on the agenda. This is a request from CRAM. And, and the, the resolution, you know, without making one up, but making one up, would be, you know, approve it in principle, but ensure that that agreement reflects some of those key principles. A, no liability. B, no cost to the taxpayers. So clean up all those other things. C, the ability, you know, and the priority is to the global flood mitigation and protection and where this can be accommodated. We do, there's a number of those things. So you're agreeing to it in principle, but if there's a flag that comes up and for some reason this doesn't align with the bigger, the bigger activities, I would expect that Council would want to protect the city in that event, right? And it would come back.
No, sorry, I, I've got my agenda on another computer, but I don't have the items. So I'm going down to this variance permit anyway. Thank you.
Councilor Moslin and then Councilor Krog.
Yes, Your Worship, I did chuckle at Counselor Zalinski's question about being under emergency operations control because I think the first 11 months of our term, we were in a state of local emergency. And yeah, I certainly did find it frustrating. It didn't seem to actually impact us with any practicality. But we were in a state of sort of suspended administration and civil rights. Anyhow, that's another story. Mayor, would it be, can I put a motion on the floor here, Mayor? And then, let me.
Krog, and then back to a motion, Councilor Krog. Can we hear before we form a motion here?
Okay.
Yeah, my comments would be to actually form a motion. Right? So if Council Moslin wants to do it, that's fine.
Yeah, well, thanks, Councilor Krog. Just gonna try to push one out there and maybe hold off on your second, anybody seconding it till we can sort of talk about the wording. Move, taking the lead from the CAO, move that Council approve in principle the deployment of an aqueduct by CRAM Holdings. And staff be instructed to make the appropriate arrangements or make the appropriate agreement. Anyhow, there's, how's that sound for a start?
Would you second that?
Look, just before, does anybody got a pro, anybody want to add to it or leave from it?
Yeah, so what I'd like to add to Counselor Moslin is under the direction of the EOC, something in there, like that?
Okay.
Back to Duncan, he had some good wording, I thought, that he was bringing forward.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Sure. And just for clarification, Counselor Zalinski, we're talking about that RD EOC? Correct. Okay, so essentially what we want to do is make sure there's no cost to the taxpayers. We want to ensure that it's aligning with the other flood mitigation activities and that the, that the RD EOC will essentially determine at what point it can be deployed. Is that correct?
And Counselor Moslin, do you make that your motion?
Yeah, certainly, Your Worship. Somehow, I don't know if the clerk got anything of my proposed motion down. But somehow, within the motion, put, you know, at the, with coordination from the Emergency Operations Center. I think that's the intent of what Counselor Zalinski and the CAO were recommending.
Okay.
How'd I do, Kevin? Where are we?
Counselor Krog, second the motion?
Okay.
Does, can we have it read back and see what we got?
He's asking for a redback.
I got something too, Kevin.
Do you want to, do you want to try it or try not?
Go ahead, Daniel.
All right. That Council approve in principle the deployment of an aqueduct by CRAM Holdings and that staff be asked to enter into an agreement that ensures the following concerns be addressed. Number one, no cost to taxpayers. Number two, alignment with other flood mitigation activities. And number three, deployment based on regional EOC.
Priorities.
Priorities.
Moslin and Krog?
Yes, certainly. Goodbye me.
Counselor Krog?
And it has to contain the word liability.
Yeah, liability. There you go.
You can get all that stuff in the agreement.
Yeah, I mean, obviously there'll be some other language, et cetera, in there. But just want to make sure we capture any key principles that Council has. We'll make it a formal agreement.
Good with that? Council ready for a vote on this? All those in favor? opposed? Carry. Thank you. All right, we're moving down to the development variance permit and this has to do with a matter that I have a conflict of interest in. And so who is the acting mayor for this month?
Shoot, we had it. Sorry, we'll grab it real quick.
And I'm going to, I'm going to mute and leave the room. And I wonder if you could call me back on my telephone when we're clear for the next item of business.
We'll do that for you, sir. Actually, Mayor.
Yeah.
What we'll do is we'll just move you into the waiting room. And then we'll just automatically bring you back in.
Okay, and I shouldn't be able to hear what goes on in the meeting?
Correct. In the waiting room, you will not be able to hear or see what's going on.
Okay, move me to waiting. That's easier and easier.
And Counselor Krog is acting mayor?
Counselor Krog would be acting mayor for April.
Surprise.
Okay.
Or the cat. The cat could be there.
Evil minion cat. Oh, yes, this meeting will happen. Okay, anyways. So. What was lost?
Uh-oh.
You're muted, Neil.
Uh-oh.
Can't carry a Neo, oh, there you are.
Okay, unmute myself. I just did. So we're looking at the development, engineering, and?
And?
And document. So we're looking at a motion that Council approved the issue of that development variance permit inclusive of conditions for design, installation, maintenance, and monitoring to mitigate odor-like pollution and noise could be set back from 100 meters to 68 from a residential zone and from 100 to 90 for a community use zone to allow cannabis production facility at 10560th Avenue on property legally described as Plan KAB 2162G, District Block 534. SDYD accept Plan 27119 H2108F with PID 007/376-715.
So with, with your permission.
One more clock?
Sorry, with your permission, acting mayor, can we provide some context on this report?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll just get Dolores to come up into the, the front seat here and she's gonna help me walk through this. But I mean, I'll keep it very short and Dolores will jump in and correct me if I make any, any mistakes. But essentially what we have here is a DVP for cannabis production. Cannabis production is regulated federally and is an approved use on this property at this time through our OCP, through our zoning. And essentially what they're looking for is some leeway on the setbacks. And so I guess the context is if this facility were built 100 meters back, they would pull a building permit and be working with the federal government and provide notification to the city and it would be proceeding. So what you have in front of you is an opportunity to layer on some further regulation and to confirm, you know, some areas that might be impacted as a result of the reduction in the setback. And so the recommendation is if you want to allow this reduced setback, that you could layer on some fairly robust requirements around noise and odor and some of that activity. Whereas if it were built 100 meters back, you wouldn't have that opportunity. So there is an opportunity to be in the driver's seat here, if, if I could put it as blunt.
Okay, I have, and I'm not sure who is first, Counselor Zalinski and Counselor Moslin. They'll have to figure out who's first.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just jump in here. I've got a lot more to add. But right at the very start, I'm gonna request a recorded vote on this issue if we get that part.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, yes, thanks, Counselor Krog. I do have some concerns about this whole issue. But first, I've got some questions. And I know, I understand Ms. Sheets is there. I guess my first question is, is about the lot. How is this lot serviced? Is it city water? What is it? And is it Fortis Power? What is this, what is this potential services coming to this building?
Through the mayor. It is city water. That's our new airport water main. It's been extended to these properties, including the other property that we own. And that's Fortis Power.
It is Fortis.
Yeah. Yes. It's Fortis up there.
Okay. My next, I guess my, my major concern is the road access. It's actually egress to that building. On an inspection of that building, the only current egress I could find was from informal gravel or dirt paths from Vine and from Birch. Both roads, I believe, outside the city. So egress to this lot is to and from the region, is in and out of the regional district. I know that even on the plan that has been submitted, it talks about a future expansion of Birch Road. And I guess my question to Ms. Sheets is, is the future expansion of Birch coming from the east or coming from the west? Or is the plan to have Birch Road be a through road of some sort?
There were, through the mayor, thank you. There, the plan for that road to go straight through was already in play. I think it was at least 10 years ago, if not longer, there were, there was a survey completed and the pins were placed for that right away to put that road through to Birch. So that will, that's already in play. They, yeah, the property has egress, like you said, from the regional district, from Birch Road and also from, I think it's Vine Road.
Vine.
Yeah, but the intention is to have the access coming from within the city.
I guess my question then, my subsequent question then, if the access is being planned to come from the west, that the Ministry of Forests has a parking lot and J Lane fence and all that sort of thing there. Is that parking lot and J Lane fence actually on the road allowance?
Through the mayor, yes, it currently is. The BC Wildlife Service has a lease on that property. They have been inquiring for many years about, about more land and access to more land and a secure compound up at the, up in that area. They have been asking for parking area and secure compound. So we've been in discussions with BC Wildlife Service for quite some time about the best location for them and, you know, what their needs are. And so, yeah, I just had a conversation with James, kind of sat off just about a week or two ago. And so we keep in constant contact and discussions about the overall plan for the airport. And, and they're very well aware of that. They are looking for a new building. The building that they currently have on there was, my understanding, was kind of put together. It was some act co-traders that were put there. And they have been in planning on a new building for quite some time. And so there are some complications with this, but we have been working with them. Yeah, I'm getting the facility that they're hoping to get.
No, okay, well, I, I guess their lease, how long till their lease is up? Or what are we looking at here in terms of timeline for the eventual construction of Birch Road?
I believe they own it.
We own?
Yeah.
No, no, we own it.
No, we own it. It's our property.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they lease it, as far as I can hear.
Yes.
And, but so my question was, is how long till the lease is up or can't, like? I'm really apprehensive about egress here because not just for this particular building, but the plan shows future buildings on site. And you have kind of, unless there's some sort of dramatic improvement in egress, either from the existing Birch Road access or the existing Vine Road access or both, I, I have a hard time with this project. Frankly, I'm not all that, I'm not really concerned about the setback, about smell, our odor. I'm not, not concerned about that when I see the engineering they have for plant for that. The engineering that I'm looking for is egress. What are their plans for moving trucks in and out, other than a dirt road through a regional district neighborhood?
So, and so through, through you, you're acting mayor. The, I guess the key piece is the set, like, this use is already permitted on this property through zoning and through the OCP. And the only reason it's in front of us today is because they're looking at reducing setbacks, which opens the door to have some of the discussions about egress and access to the site. But keeping in mind that if they were to develop, you know, 100 meters from, you know, the setback within that permitted 100 meters, we would have no ability to have that discussion. So the mechanism is in front of us to have that. And if there was a requirement we wanted to layer on, you could do that through the DVP. So I'm just trying to set some context there, Counselor Moslin. If that helps at all, I don't know if it does. But the decision around egress almost happened when it was permitted within the zone. And you may not agree with that, but in permitting that type of use there, that should have been considered. And I don't know if it was.
I believe, and I believe, through you, Mayor, to the CAO, I believe the original approval was in the previous term.
Okay, yeah.
And, and so, you know, I never got to talk about it then. But with the map of the future development on the screen, you can see that buildings, is it Building 2, 1 and 2, future phases? That, you know, we're talking major development on this lot with, you know, egress coming from the west along the future expansion of Birch. I also want to point out that the future buildings will be even closer to the residential area. And if those future buildings were to become manufacturing centers of cannabis, you know, they would, they would infringe even further on the setbacks. Anyhow, that's, those are my comments. Maybe staff, the council could reassure me about, thank you.
Any response from staff about the future building number two and that it would be closer?
Yeah, yeah, it would require, if they were going to do the same activity there, it would require further DVPs. And just going a little further with the CAO's response is if this wasn't a cannabis facility and it was another type of manufacturing facility, they would be going ahead. They would be getting a building permit. They'd be pulling it and they would be going ahead with whichever operation it is. So when this was zoned as light industrial or airport industrial, it would have gone to the regional district for review. And the regional district would have had an opportunity to comment if they had any concerns with the access. There are no concerns as far as Transportation Act or Highways Act or any of those other acts in terms of having access coming from the regional district. And so the idea is that the best practice for us would be to have it coming through the airport and the industrial area. At this time, we don't have that, but the accesses are completely suitable and.
Yeah, and also through this, just to clarify. Yeah, and also through this, just to clarify, in granting, if, if council chose to grant this DVP, it's only for phase one. It does not include two or three.
I have Counselor Thompson and then Counselor Zelinski.
Just a couple of questions. Was this property recently sold to these developers? Because it's not reflective of what was being discussed with the previous council for development of that particular property.
Yes, it was sold to Thompson Health Products from the city.
Thank you. The other thing is, is that we do have a letter in opposition.
Same developer, different.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just clarification.
Go ahead.
No, yeah, this was the company that the city sold the property to initially.
Just the, the project changed? Like, the intended use changed from one use to now cannabis production?
Yeah.
Okay. And we do have a letter in opposition to this development. And if, if I can pull it up, I believe that it is the complaints have sought legal advice on this. Do we have any comments on that in response from, from our, our legal people or not? Maybe it's not necessary.
No, and, and through you, Acting Mayor, it's a permitted use, so I'm not sure what that, that advice would entail. And if at some point we receive something, you know, we would immediately get some advice. But it currently fits within the zoning. It currently fits within the OCP. And it's, it's approved through the federal government. It's not even provincial or local government. We'll get notification. But it's an approved use. And I think we've even received maybe one in addition, a late concern that came forward. So, yeah, there's, there's been some concerns. I can't speak to, you know, assess value of homes or any of those, those pieces. Essentially, when this was zoned, is it light industrial?
Airport.
Or zoned airport industrial, I'm assuming those things were taken into consideration when that decision was made. When the zoning was updated to allow cannabis production, I'm assuming in 2017 or 18, after it was legalized, you'd make the assumption those things were also considered. But really, we're just looking at a setback for a legal conforming use.
Yeah, one of the, just to jump in here.
Sure.
One of the, I went through the complaint letter. And the proponent or the person that put in the letter is stating that B.C. Assessment told them there's an automatic 25% loss of fair market value for their property being next to any kind of cannabis thing. And I'm sitting there thinking, B.C. Assessment does not ever talk about fair market value. They just go off their assessment. So I'm not sure where those figures came from. I have Counselor Zelinski and then Counselor Moslin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor. A couple of things. You know, it's been brought out that the, that the traffic flow will be through the regional district. I'm kind of disappointed and I don't know why we didn't ask the regional district for comments. And it sure would have been nice for some of us that worked at the people to know what the, what the original purpose of the, the building was.
Yeah, so we did ask the RD for comments, Dolores? And none received? No comments received from the RD counselor to answer your question?
Okay, the people I talked to didn't even know that it was happening, so that concerns me.
Okay, in answer to your question about the the original use that was described was for growing of herbs. And then I see somewhere somebody put in dried fruit, but it was to create food products to be shipped overseas.
Yeah, and I guess I get back to the comment that I made earlier that here's a developer, I guess, that keeps changing his mind. And I, I looked at the application and the date of the application. But the first question came to my mind, it looked like it was handwritten. So, and to our CAO, I'm used to when a document comes into the building that there's a date stamp on it. And I haven't been, I haven't been where, where this is actually received by staff, but I'll leave that one to you.
So the question, sorry, what's the question, Counselor?
Whether or not the documents that come into the city are date stamped so we know when we receive them, as opposed to someone's signature of what date they thought that they were filling up the application.
So we can answer that yet? Go ahead, Dolores.
Through Acting Mayor, it was, this application was emailed in.
So we have a date stamp on the email to answer your question, Counselor.
I, you know, I, I'm asking for recorded vote on this because been there, done that, don't want to go back. When you're dealing with odor complaints, lighting complaints, noise complaints, you better know what measurements you're, you're working on. And I can tell you for cannabis odor, it's going to be not very good if you get into that fight. What's, what's a nuisance odor and what's not? I, I've been there with pig farms. I've been there with noise complaints with wind farms. And municipality has not a leg to stand on. We don't have any definitions in our bylaws on what those levels should be or shouldn't be. And so to say to the proponent he's going to look after everything, I, I don't buy that. And I'm going to be staying far away from this one as I can. So I'll leave it at that.
So Counselor, Acting Mayor Crogg, just a, a quick comment. Just for clarification, if they move this 32 meters back, we don't have any, say, over noise or, or smell or odor, sorry. It's federally approved, right? And so the recommendation in front of?
And that's going to be okay. Then they'll be between the building owner and the proponent.
Okay.
But if we say that we're going to regulate nuisance odors and we have no definition of what it is or no measurement, I was going to make a comment, but we're sort of doing things into the wind that doesn't help anymore.
Yeah, and through you, Acting Mayor, the recommendation is, is that we ask for them to provide an engineer's assurance that they're mitigating the odors and the noise. And so we're trying to, trying to address that and have an engineer sign off on that because we don't know, we don't know how to measure it. And so the first piece is the engineer signs off that it'll work. The second piece is that they actually include it in the development. And then the third piece is that they maintain it throughout the life of the use to ensure that it's in place and we're not, council's not promised something and then it doesn't come to fruition. So we're trying to check all three of those boxes.
Yeah, so the unfortunate thing is the engineers can engineer all they want and say, yeah, it complies. The guy living next to it says, no, it's a nuisance odor. And that's where the fight begins. And when it's in a permit like this and municipality's in the middle of it, it's not a good situation.
Counselor Moslin.
Sorry, thank you. Trying to lower my hand and too many buttons. Yeah, I, I, I guess my question is, I'm still, I'm still going back to egress, although I certainly sympathize with Counselor Zelinski's concerns about nuisance. I, I was trying to remember what, I, I think we do have something about nuisance odor somewhere in our bylaws. And basically, they're just defined by the number of complaints. However, I, I might be mistaken about that. I know that's, I know that's the case for wood smoke, which is defined as a nuisance and is defined by the number of complaints, which makes it pretty easily to define. Anyhow, yeah, perhaps though, if that was the case, that a, a bylaw would need to be revised to say that six complaints, anyhow. But I guess, but that aside, my other, I'm still back to this egress thing. I'm sorry, I'm writing this. I, a big building has been built in a, in a landlocked lot, a significant lot. And was, my question is, was, was the question of egress an issue when it was first zoned correctly? When the building was first approved? Was there any agreement about the development of egress associated with the original building permit? Thank you.
Through the staff?
Go ahead.
Being that those roads are outside the city boundary, it wouldn't be us asking for any improvements or any off-site servicing. That would have come from the regional district had they wanted that. But Birch is not, as far as I know, Birch is actually a paved road. I don't believe it's a dirt road. The other one is for sure a dirt road, but it would, this project, my understanding is the phases, it could be several years, it could be five years, 10 years before the future phases come along. And so during that time, our plans, we've got the airport development plan that we're working on. And the idea is to work on that overall development plan for the airport. And so this project and B.C. Wildlife Service and, and, you know, all the stakeholders in that area will be involved in that as well as council as we move forward with that and planning for the future of the airport. So the idea is that, yes, we had planned on that road. That road, like I said, it was on multiple maps prior. And the plan was that that road would eventually go through there, so.
Counselor Thompson. You're muted.
I'm not muted anymore. The, the original application, and I'm going back to the previous council, was there not access in and out as part of that original plan? And if it was, why would it change for this development?
Well, through the mayor? Yes, there, there are, the access that they have in there is the, the permanent access for the future is going to come through that lot. And their plans, and they've developed those plans to have that access coming in from the west. So the access that they're currently using is just basically temporary access until that road is extended.
Okay, one of the things, and I guess to sum it up and probably repeat what the CAO has been saying, was if we want any kind of control, then we can grant the variance, which allows us control. If we don't grant the variance, they can still do what they want. They're just going to do it 30 meters inside. But there would be no, no extra control from the city.
That's, that's correct, Acting, Acting Mayor. And, and if there's something specific around egress you want to see, now is the time to inject that into the DVP.
Counselor Zelinski. And then Moslin.
Thank you. Thank you. So, so you're right, you might be able to put more conditions on it. But that means more policing and more inspections and more staff time and more lawyer costs. And we know time is up.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I, I, is there a special, is there, could I put in somewhere in the motion pending, pending the development of egress? You know,
I don't think that.
Any development of a formal egress plan? I mean.
Oh, plan.
Anyhow, so the CAO just said now's the time.
Yeah.
I'm concerned, what can we do?
So just for clarification, Counselor Moslin, you're, you would like to see their number of vehicles that they're suggesting would be coming through there and which routes they'd be using?
You know, that would probably start to address some of my concerns. You know, if you, if you're running a truck, a trucking thing in and out, and basically you're coming through two very small residential roads from the regional district in and out.
Okay.
I, I, I just have, I'm having a hard time with that. So I guess I would like to see, you know, if, now's the time to put something else on the plate. I, I would like to see definite signs forward of the improvement of egress, either from the improvement of Birch Road from the west or the improvements of Vine and to the existing Birch Road. Anyhow.
Yeah, so through Acting Mayor to you, Counselor, that would probably, you probably wouldn't want to approve the DVP at this time. You probably want to request additional information regarding transportation and egress. And if you had some specific asks around that, you would do that. And I'll, I'll kind of lean back on Dolores. I think that would be the right procedure, just request additional information before they make it and then they could include it in the DVP after?
My understanding of a development variance permit, does any of the asks have to be directly related to the variance? So the variance is actually for a setback for the building. It's not, has nothing to do with access. So I don't believe that we can, I think we can request it and we can work with the developer. And I suspect they will be happy to comply. But in terms of this DVP, the asks have to be specifically related to the variances. And, but, I mean, we can do things within the development variance permit and work with them on it. But, yeah, I don't think we can do it with this, I don't think this is vehicle for it.
Okay.
And if I, if I may, through Acting Mayor, I could just assure Counselor Zelinski, and thank you for considering our staff time, we would be putting everything in this development variance permit to make sure that the onus is on the developer and on them to provide that information and to do all of the work necessary to basically, I guess, keep an eye on it.
Yeah, you're right, at the end of the day, you guys are going to get the phone calls, not us. So we're going to spend forward until.
Well, you might get some.
Okay, thank you. Just looking at this, I know Counselor Moslin's concerned about egress. But looking at the plan, would there not be enough room for them, a, a truck to, to go out the way it came in? I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Can, staff, what would really might be helpful? If, if you could put an image of the, of that lot, a Google Earth image, sorry, a Google map image that show, that will show, you know, the quality of the road, the existing quality of the road and access. Okay, thank you. Yes, well, okay, you can see Birch comes in from, I believe that's Sagamore. Vine, Vine comes in from Sagamore, Birch comes in from Kenmore. They go right past several homes. The building, which is not, does not exist on this Google map projection, is sort of, oh, I don't know, it, it, it's not quite in the middle, the existing building. Anyhow, but you could see that the existing access from Birch is basically a dirt road. And the, and the, and the access to Vines is also a dirt road. Anyhow, so, you know, if air quality is an issue, then dust might be the next item of complaint. So I, I'd still like to see some further information about plans for transportation in and out. Thank you.
Okay, question for staff. Did we receive any complaints of any kind concerning access or egress when the building was being constructed? Right, that would be the most amount of traffic you would end up at one basic time?
Go ahead.
I'm pointing at you.
Actually, yes, I did receive one phone call. And when I, we discussed the future plans of the access coming from the city property, the gentleman was quite happy with that. But that was it.
Okay.
You have, it's coming through the airport, is it not? The access to the property?
Future access, yes.
Yeah, but we don't know when in the future, is that right?
It's going on the plans.
Five years, right?
Oh, I didn't see it on the campus plan.
It's the lease?
It could be sooner.
Yeah.
We're working with the B.C. Wildlife Service right now. Like I said, they're, they've got some changes happening and they got some, some stuff happening. And so their lease is for another six. And so, uh, their lease is for another six years. But, uh, we are working with them on, they just, they need a better setup than they have. And so we are working with them on getting them set up at the airport in, in something that's a bit more suitable for them.
One of the, um, concepts with the original building and the fact that, um, stuff, yeah, okay, stuff would be, you know, the computer, uh, would be, um, some of it flown out. That's what they were talking about with the original herbs and stuff. And if you think that the product produced, it's not like they're growing watermelons. So who knows if they're planning on flying this stuff out for all, you know?
It's, it's through you, Acting Mayor. It's, uh, this one is very, very difficult. And, and a lot of that egress access, a lot of those questions, you know, again, not being here, those are usually addressed throughout the O C P and the zoning. And really, the setback is really the, the discussion point right now, which is, you're kind of coming into it halfway through. It's difficult for council.
So we're really getting off topic.
A little bit.
Just in the, and egress. What we're really being asked to deal with is the variance request.
Correct.
Are we ready or, uh, was counsel, we're gonna make a motion for more information?
But, but the variance request goes directly to the operation itself. They didn't need a variant, variance request for, for their original project. So, so I think, um, access and, and all the other things are pertinent to this, um, this way.
And change the access. We can ask, ask the question. And so through you, Acting Mayor, if this is a big concern and council really wants to satisfy yourself, we can ask for additional information. And we will also get some additional information as far as how far we can go through this development variance in requirements for access and egress. We can definitely gather that information. If you're not prepared to make that decision today based on the information you have, we can get some more.
Mayor, uh, sorry.
Yeah. Moslin.
Can I have the floor, Mayor? I don't want to speak ahead of Mr. Counselor Zelinski. I can see his hand is raised too.
No, you first.
Well, then, can I may just make a motion and then we'll find out whether council supports a request? Move that, uh, uh, move that council request further information on the development of this parcel, uh, especially in term, in terms of access. Does that sound reasonable to, and, and if the intent, if not the actual wording can get a secondary, maybe we can dispose of that and then move back to the, uh, the original request for decision.
Well, you want to talk access and egress, right, Counselor Moslin?
I'm sorry, I was using the two words as synonymous, uh, that is, you know, uh, he, I'm, I'm worried about, I, I, I like Counselor Crox's point about, uh, airport, uh, transportation product, uh, wow, that's interesting. Uh, but that would be a really roundabout route, uh, you know. Critical to that would be egress from the airport side, uh, which in my mind is certainly the preferable way to plan a, a, a production site. Anyhow, uh, so I guess my proposed motion is that staff, uh, council refer this back to staff for further, for a further report on, uh, access challenges.
Counselor Zel, oh, so that's a motion.
I'll, I'll move that, see if I can get a secondary.
Do we have, oh, uh, Counselor Thompson, seconds. Uh, further discussion, I have, uh, Counselor Zelinski.
Thank, thank you. Um, so if we're going back for more information, um, and I was hoping to amend the motion before we had a secondary, um, also get, um, uh, decibels, D Bs at property line, which they won't exceed. They're saying they're gonna have noise, noise reduction, so get a number. Uh, they say odor, what are we measuring and at what levels at the property line? So if staff wants to, uh, police this thing, at least get something to police it on.
And so that, to me, is more information, so it fits with the...
Yeah, I, I'm certainly open to that if my secondary is, uh, Counselor Zelinski, they're making more general, uh, and, uh, or just drop the word egress and trans, drop that in, that, that terminology under your, my proposed motion. Just request more information, uh, with the understanding that it include egress, noise and, uh, smell levels.
Yeah, and, and I don't care, well, I don't care. If you want a general motion, great, but when it does come back and they say that they're gonna fix these things, I'd like to know what kind of levels they're talking about.
Yeah, what they're fixing to.
Yeah, uh, because I thought I had said, read something that they're gonna clean up the air so good that it's gonna be better than the outside stuff. So I don't know how that's gonna work.
Yes.
Well, I, I don't mind second, uh, the friendly amendment, but I think we need to be specific, the information that we're asking for.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, if, because I don't want just going back and forth to staff, you know, ten dozen times before we finally deal with it. So if we know specifically what it is that we are asking the report to include, um, then, uh, then I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to accept that friendly amendment.
Can, can I take a shot at clarifying, uh, Acting Mayor?
Sure.
I, I see Counselor Studley, I didn't want to jump in front of him though.
Oh, he doesn't have his hand up here. Fine, Counselor Studley.
Yeah, just, just a note, uh, decibels, because we were talking about those. Um, the cell phone apps, yes, they sound good and look all nice. They're usually off by as much as five D B, so it's worth it to either calibrate them or to get a proper, um, decimal meter. They also don't pick up no as good as proper decimal meters. So I know we pass sometimes, we just the cell phone app to measure D B, but, um, just making no backs. Not ideal unless they're properly calibrated.
Okay. So just, uh, I'll, I'll take a shot at clarifying exactly what we'll bring back, just so that expectation is set. Essentially, what you're looking for more information on is, um, how access is gonna work on Birch and essentially what type of traffic we'll be accessing and even frequency in that amount. And, and we're gonna go as far as we can, as far as this D V P and what the ask is and how many questions we can ask in that area, so as far as we can. The other piece is around sound, uh, decibels and odors. And we're really gonna go back to the developer and say, so what are you proposing is the acceptable amount in these areas? And how are you proposing monitoring them? And so we'll be putting that back on, on the developer to provide that information to us and come up with that plan, because that's obviously a concern of the neighbors and a concern of council. And we need to make sure that's addressed before council can really take another look at this. Does that wrap up the three kind of areas?
Good for me.
Okay.
Me, Counselor.
So, um, the motion, are we ready for a vote?
I think Counselor Zelinski requested a verbal vote.
Yeah, cap back.
Yeah, and, and seeing as the, the way that we went, um, I, I just was dealing with what I had, so I'll, I'll withdraw that, uh, that request. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready? Anybody want it read back for the four hundred? Fine, any... Okay, all in favor? Uh, I have, his hand keeps disappearing. Uh, opposed. That's probably, so that's everybody. I can't get everybody on my screen, so I can't really see. But to me, it appears to have passed. Shall we, um, uh, call the, uh, mayor back?
Yep. Yep, well, we will take care of that.
Yes, okay. Do we have to make the motion to defer this to our next, the development variance?
No, you've made the motion, so we're good. You want more information, we'll bring that back.
Okay.
Then it was silence.
David, you wanna hop up here?
Sure, please.
Oh, marriage me in.
Mayor, you're muted.
Okay. The next item of business is the, uh, seniors' facility report. And, um, this is, uh, been done at our request. And, uh, I would open this up to a presentation. Mr. Redfern, do you wanna?
Yeah, we'll jump in there, uh, through your worship. So, so really, this is, this is, David, you know, has been updating me on it. He's been working very hard on this and, and really working with the whole team. Um, this one, it's been a, a bit of a challenge. And so really, this is an update of kind of where we are at today and now the next steps, kind of moving forward of the next areas to look at. And if you want to jump in.
Uh, certainly, Ms. Redfern, uh, through the mayor, but to the council. Um, really, at, at this point, the idea was really just to look at what options are possibly available out there. Uh, it wasn't necessarily to pick an option, but it was to throw those options back at council for, for their perspective and what they think might possibly work and what's probably a non-starter. And, uh, you know, there's a variety of options. Some are at no cost, I suppose, if we're willing to wait for a considerable period of time. Or some are, some, some options are at a considerable cost if we want to do something now. And there's a whole gamut in between. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the report and, uh, with the options that, that have been laid out. Maybe there's something I'm missing too. Maybe you folks have, uh, have, have further suggestions. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out on the table and hoping to get some, uh, feedback from, from council so that we can kind of move forward with the seniors, uh, in, in a certain direction.
And, and I'm gonna jump in. In not being here for the whole discussion, I'm gonna make some assumptions that at some point along the way, council, you know, committed to some support for this group in finding a new location. So that's kind of the premise that we've been operating on and, and that's the premise that I'm now working with David on as well.
Fair enough.
Well, I think the big change in this for me in terms of where we're going with this is that we've added a dimension that we may have some insurance funds available if it was appropriate for us to invest in, in, with the seniors, to cooperate with the seniors. So we've broadened the scope of possibilities by including some, uh, sites that, uh, we might add some value to. Is that, is that my understanding of, of where we're at, David?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that, that's certainly my understanding as well. Um, and moving forward, we, we can refine exactly how much we're looking at and how much we wish to expand, if we wish to expand any of that at all on, on any particular facility. So, yeah, there, there is that opportunity.
Yeah, and at this time, we can't get into the details of the amounts as, as that discussion would take, take place or, you know, could take place in a, in the closed. And, and so we can't get into those details, but we can assume that there are some amounts that could be utilized.
Agreed. Council, comment? Jump in. I see Chris Moslin. Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, you know, I, 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 I guess what I, what we're trying to find here, I believe, is two things, a, a temporary solution and a long-lasting solution. Uh, I think there are a couple long-lasting solutions, uh, on our plate. Uh, but they might, they're gonna have to be dealt with, I believe, in camera. However, I, I, I was very intrigued with the proposal by Mr. Bruce that, uh, that a used pre-manufactured twenty-four-hundred-square-foot, uh, kitchen dining facility could be brought in and set up for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, and I know that the, that might be, uh, an appropriate solution for a temporary solution. I, I, I kind of agree with staff that I don't think we'd ever lose much money on that in the sense that, that, that building would be portable to another location and as well as reusable later by the city or a subject of sale by the city. Anyhow, I, I just want to point that out that we seem to be trying to grapple with some temporary solutions. Uh, I do want to point out too that if we did repair the city park building and razed it, that would not include giving it a new kitchen. I, I also found the five-thousand-dollar amount for the, uh, for the estimate redevelopment of a kitchen, a veranda, a lodge, kind of unrealistic, unless a huge bunch, amount of work has been done on it since I last saw it in December. Anyhow, uh, so I'm... Also, I'm hoping that the seniors' team is also pursuing, uh, options. As much as us, up to us to solve this problem, but they are out, out there trying to come up with solutions too. Anyhow, I look forward to more discussion on it. Thank you.
Counselor Zelinski, you've had some involvement with the seniors. What, what's your opinion?
Uh, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm basically where Counselor Moslin is. You know, we've had some discussions, um, I, not like, unlike our C A O. Uh, what I walked into was a, a seniors' group who was very active that had a building in city park that served the community well and served them well. And then, and, and a building that they, they worked on to try and get it that way. Uh, what happened, a lot of damage happened. And they're saying, hey, uh, city, you helped us out last time, can you help us out this time? So, um, so that's where I think we're at. I, I like Dave's list. Uh, the one question I had is, what were you thinking when you put airport down there?
A, a, a good question, Counselor. Uh, through the mayor. One of the thoughts that occurs to me is, well, it's municipal property. Uh, many of the facilities, if not most of them, are municipally owned and most of them constitute relatively large spaces which may be converted to, uh, to, for, for an assembly use. If not, uh, one of the existing facilities, possibly even the new facility, uh, for, for that purpose. So it's, it's really airport and in brackets, question mark. Is this something that needs to be investigated more?
Thank you. I, I guess where I'm at is, I think Dave's got a good list here. I think, uh, we should engage the seniors again and see if, uh, they've got anything here or another place that, uh, they want to work on. And, you know, I, I personally like that interior health, uh, location. But again, I don't know what, who's targeting interior health, see whether it's available or not.
I, if, if I can, Counselor, uh, through the mayor, I'll give you a couple updates. First off, interior health, I believe, has pretty much allocated that facility for any pandemic resource that they may need over the next long-term period. So I, I don't really, as, as opportunistic as that may be, uh, my, my thinking with interior health was, was possibly partnering with interior health as this is somewhat of a societal health kind of component. Maybe they've got some assistance that can be provided. In addition, that, that's all my, also my thinking with regional district and that certainly this is a, a bit of a broader regional consideration. And possibly the regional district can bring something to the table. And I'm just saying possibly because I really don't know.
Counselor Johnson?
Um, thank you. Um, I'm looking at the library basement. And I know that we looked at that at one time and there did have a kitchen in there, although the, the ceiling, I think, was below standard. Um, but I find it interesting that that was, uh, included on the, on the other possibilities. And, uh, I guess I'm, I'm looking to, to Dave for some comments. And before he does, did we not put a ramp, build a ramp at the library to facilitate entry into the basement? We did something with a ramp, I know that.
Just a ramp to the front door? I don't believe there was any ramp to the basement, Counselor.
Uh, Counselor, uh, through the mayor, we, we certainly have cost to... Counsel, through the mayor, we certainly have costed out options in the past for providing exactly that facility. I don't have the numbers in front of me at this time. But one of the considerations about the use of the library is one of the seniors' overarching concerns, that the space be primarily for them. We've spoken in the past about revamping or actually renovating the basement area of the library for a multitude of community uses and for various social groups. And it's fairly clear that the way the seniors operate, logistically, it's not in your best interest to be setting things up and turning things down, setting things up and turning things down. The library is approximately 4,000 square feet. So there's probably no reason why half of it couldn't be allocated primarily for the seniors' purposes. The costs are fairly high. I better caution you of that just to get ramps and renovation work done. And regarding the ceiling height, I've been in that library basement. I'm six foot three, and it doesn't strike me as being any lower than any other kind of community space. You're probably not going to get a trampoline down there, but I don't think they're looking for trampolines. So it may have potential, but those costs are going to be pretty significant.
Okay, thank you.
Further, counsel? We should make this, Counsel Corlitt, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just quickly, wasn't one of the concerns about having to put an elevator in for access? They do have the ramp at the back door of the library, but I don't think it goes down the basement. I remember when the art gallery was down there, when they held the wine and cheese gala every year, how, you know, how successful that was. And it was a fairly big space, but I don't know. It is big, and the kitchen facilities are nominal. It certainly wouldn't be set up for catering.
Well, if I could clarify, Counselor Corlitt, through the mayor. The study that was done probably about between six and eight years ago included a ramp construction from the rear parking lot, which kind of extended a little bit with the circuitously through that parking lot a little bit, but not impacting parking too terribly much. And then traveling down along the south side of the building. It was not an elevator per se. We've looked, I believe, just recently at elevator installations there. And those obviously are not cheap either. I forget where, what the cost was for doing that. However, with the nature of this report and given the time that we do have possibly to review these things in more detail, if that's something that council figures certainly should be considered, we can certainly look at it. I just hazard at this point that the cost of development in the library is going to be expensive. And the seniors really didn't suggest that they thought that was an ideal place. There's no windows necessarily, well, there's no windows at all, actually, to the outdoors. It certainly wasn't their ideal location.
All right. I believe at this point, we should confirm your continued work on this matter with a motion. Would that be in order? Mr. Redfern?
Yeah, so through your worship, I think Dave has a good resolution that wraps up kind of some of the next steps forward if council is interested.
And can we make that motion? I'm looking for it here.
Excuse me, don't commit. We don't speak to the library or we don't speak to a number of the other options in that resolution, so.
We can still.
Okay.
We're good.
So the council receives a report and further direct staff to explore the expanded, I have it here now, explore the other options that have been put out there? Do we have that resolution?
Yeah, it's on the screen now. And as Dave mentioned, library's not on there, and so we can leave it a little open-ended as well.
All right, and the motion? Mayor? Or Zelinski? And here, Mr. Maslin, you're wanting to speak on it?
I do. I'm not too sure of the motion, Tom. I just would like to involve the senior society in the motion.
Yep.
Explore options, you know, for the council direct staff to explore in greater detail the costs and benefits of these options with the senior society.
You know, I would really be surprised if that's not part of Mr. Bruce's directions in terms of working with this matter. But you can add it in there if you feel it's necessary.
Well, if that is his intent, I agree that, again, like I spoke to earlier, I'd really like to see them involved.
Mr. Bruce, I believe they have involved if you would.
I'm not for it. Sorry, I missed it, Mayor, sorry.
I believe Mr. Bruce has been involved with the seniors and would continue in his search to involve them in discussion.
Okay.
So Counselor Zelinski makes the motion and the second for that? Counselor Corlitt? Further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor? The vote carried.
I'd just like to ask, or add, Mr. Mayor, that the seniors are very appreciative of Dave's time in working through this issue with them. And they're pretty happy with all the work they're doing with them, so I'd add that.
And I would hope that yourself and Counselor Maslin would continue to be involved with them as well, liaison from council. You can give them some understanding that we think they're important in our community. Okay, we're moving on to the next item.
I just want to add that we know that they're important to our community.
They are. I'm one of them. Moving on to the next item. We've modified 8A, and we are accepting reports from our CAO on this matter. And so I'll pass this on to Mr. Redfern, the request for, question of legalities and liabilities.
Sure. So through you, your worship, you know, this was really an update, and it was really in response to some very specific questions that were asked on April 6th, in particular regarding liability and also regarding the 90-day period. I won't read the entire report. I tend to get a little long-winded on those things, so I won't read it all. But in short, it really talks about, you know, whether the tacit compliance or tacitly allowing some of these activities to take place constitutes liability on the city's behalf. And it also looks at whether we were to provide or allow another group to provide some of these basics of life and then whether that would result in additional liability. And I mean, the short answer in speaking with our legal is that really you're not taking on any additional liability, and really this could be seen as kind of a right to life or do care as a municipality. So really, it doesn't constitute liability. Where the liability arises is where we set up some standards or some regulations and then fail to enforce them. And that's where the real liability would be incurred. And then, as far as the 90 days, I don't even think we'll address that because right now, that group has asked us to defer the whole decision for the program. So I don't think there's any reason to go into that at this time.
Thank you. And we've all read the report. Counselor Krog has the hand up.
Yeah, I was, I read the report. I made some comments to other members of council. I was taken aback by the report because it sounds like a legal opinion on a generic overall, oh, what can you do of homeless there in this area? But we've been told that the neighbors have serious concerns about fire. There's been two major fires. Luckily, they weren't in the middle of summer. So was, when the lawyers did that feedback or return their opinions, are they aware that there are and have been actual fires? And we've been notified and put on notice? So that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, so through your worship to answer that question, yeah, there was some discussion with legal. And it's good to know this isn't the first community that they've, you know, engaged in some discussion around this. And really, it was that significant public health piece. And one of the tests is, you know, could this occur in another area? Has this occurred in another area? And the answer was, yeah, is this area creating more of a public health risk than other areas? And as we kind of waded through that and looked at those discussions, they said, yes, that's something you could propose if you were going down the road of removing individuals from this site. But, you know, as legal, they always err on the side of caution and said it might not constitute a significant public risk or a significant health and safety risk. So erring on the side of caution based on the number of fires we're having in other areas, it wasn't really predominant, I guess, if that answers your question.
Okay, any follow-up, Counselor Krog, before we go on to Counselor Zelinski and then Maslin?
Yeah, just a follow-up. You're sitting on a bone-dry hill with no access to water. There's been two fires in the exact same, what, 300-yard footprint? And they're saying, oh, no, that's just the same as fires everywhere else in the community. And I just can't fathom how anyone would think that there is not a risk of fire. And it could be a devastating fire. Just look at the stuff that happened in California. It could take out that whole camp and a lot of valley heights. And if we want to put in any kind of fire guard, then we're liable because we're trying to mitigate it. It just doesn't make sense.
Yes, and Counselor Krog, you're right. There's, there is risk. And if we were moving down the road where we decided that that risk was inherent and we wanted to remove individuals from the site, we could pursue removing people from the site based on that. We could.
All right, and Counselor Zelinski, then Counselor Maslin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As our CAO has mentioned, that if you have rules in place and you do not follow them, you are in a libelous situation. And our bylaw 2057 deals with public spaces. It deals with open fires. It deals with a lot of the stuff that's happening up there that we are not enforcing. So I submit that we've got an issue on our hands that we have to deal with one way or the other because we are hanging out there, because we do have rules that we're not enforcing.
Thank you. And Counselor Maslin? I'm sorry you took your hands down.
Okay, Mayor, two buttons. One too many. I guess I don't want to belabor the liability issue terribly much. I do want to, I want to talk about what the CAO called, quote, constitutional duty, unquote, throughout the report. I think it's mentioned three times. And I think this refers to the fact, the difficulty in removing a camp. That, you know, you have to, you have to, you know, if you do not have, and somewhere in the report it read, you know, if you do not have a safe alternative, you cannot just go in and move people out. So I'm assuming that when, and I'll just ask this question of the CAO, when he says constitutional duty, he's actually referring to the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, not our bylaw and not even provincial laws, our orders. Is that correct? Is that what you refer to?
Yeah, yes, through your worship, that. And that's the language that comes, obviously, from our legal. I'm not fluent, and so that's some language that they've provided to me. And yes, it references, yeah, some of those constitutional duties, not necessarily provincial or local government.
Yeah, so those are overriding duties. They're, that's overriding law. Anyhow, but I don't want to belabor that point. But what I want to just point out is that the original letter the council received on the 30th of March, you know, does not specify moto. What the request is, would like to, with the permission of the city and the team of the Urban Family Services, would like to discuss this potential proposal and the possible opportunities for partnership with the city. Though there wasn't any request for moto, really. The request was to talk. And you know what? I think we've dealt with that. And when we decided to form the wellness, or at least chase them down, okay, well, this would be one of the issues we're going to talk about with them. There might be other alternatives. There might be other options to moto. At least if we sat down with them, I guess it won't be face-to-face other than Zoom. But yeah, let's talk. Let's see if there are other options. Let's come up and solve this, you know, this potential, you know, $300 a month for 90 days. Well, okay, you know, that's certainly really not a lot of money. But, you know, anyhow, it is a complicated issue. I want to point out that the request was to talk and that council has sort of moved ahead with talking. And I'll turn for now, wait for others to comment. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson, Krog, and then Zelinski then. So Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, worship. The issue of moto and having, you know, those at risk in one place, I think, is not a bad idea. I think it's, in fact, it's a good idea. It's for their safety and protection as well as ours. And the fires that occurred, I think, were in winter, and they were, I don't know if they were fires to keep warm or whatever. But I know there's been some discussion or proposals out there to provide them with food, provide them with propane, either for heat or for cooking, and that the medical community can go up there and check if there's a need and other services that are provided. And I honestly don't see that it's going to be that big of an issue if it is checked out by our governance contractor, but Alpott, and that it, they are provided with garbage containers and flooded potties and a handwashing station. I mean, these are the necessities of life. And you don't provide that, then you're running the risk that it's just going to be a free-for-all. And it's unfortunate, but I think that we need to take, we need to be proactive on this and not reactive. And I would certainly like to support our staff and our, in our community. I think that when we get a meeting with this wellness group, we can come back to council with more information on what services it is that they want to provide, they are providing, what they've looked at. Right now, we're flying by the feet of our parents because we don't know. We just don't know.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Krog, and then Zelinski?
Yeah, this is totally reactive. It's just saying, here's a squatter's camp with a history, and you're going to increase the size of that squatter camp and not put in any mitigation whatsoever for fire. The other thing is, this is given to us under the cover of COVID. And to me, again, that's totally insane. You do not bring a bunch of people together. You do not bring a bunch of people together to live basically, um, in a communal and think that that's going to stop COVID. And plus, as far as the community goes, if there's a single person in a camp and he goes into town, he goes back to the camp, he's self-isolating. If you put 20 people up there, they're all going to town. Um, the other thing is all the people that go in and out. We've got people bringing food. We've got, um, drug dealers. We've got, um, people hauling garbage and scrap. And, and that's basically what happens when you get a camp. So what we're saying, if we agree to this, is, oh, sure, let's just, uh, we'll have a permanent year-round shelter camp. And, um, anything that goes wrong with it has nothing to do with us. Like, it's just, yeah. Don't worry about it, taxpayer. If your house burns down, then whatever, you know, we'll have that spot at the camp ready for you.
Well, I, I, I hear your concerns, um, but I'm not hearing a, an alternative proposal. Um, and I think Counselor Moslin has pointed out several times that, um, we are required by the ministry to provide some services to these, um, people that are at risk.
And you can jump in and respond. Would you, the ministry?
We're going to work with each other. If we can keep it through the chair, please, I think.
Through the chair. With the.
He was the next on the list, Counselor?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll jump in there and says, yeah, yeah, we are providing as best we can. When, when that Parks and Open Spaces bylaw was presented to this council, it was in direct response to the court decision that says, if you do not have a shelter, you must provide a slot for them. And that's what that bylaw lays out. We're not saying that you can't camp in Lewis Higgin Park. We're just putting stipulations around it as far as you can't set up on this time, it has to be taken down on this time. So we're covered constitutionally as far as I can see. At least that's what staff told us when we adopted that bylaw.
So I pulled, I pulled through the map this morning. Sorry, Counselor, I, I looked at the bylaw. I, I had a map printed off. And we do have a bylaw, but it appears, and, and I'm still kind of learning the spaces, but it appears that through the bylaw, we exclude all of our open spaces. So we do say you can camp at night, but nowhere in town essentially. Unless I'm missing a couple of spaces and, and I know it's come up and I can't remember who threw, you know, this is kind of geared around public spaces and parks, but maybe it could be expanded into property that we own that isn't necessarily a public space right now. Sorry to interrupt, Counselor.
So it is a public space. That's the problem. So if you go through the bylaw and the, the public space, there's a definition of it.
Yeah.
And it's basically any property that city owns. And that's what they're sitting on right now at moto. Piece of property that city owns. So whether it's moto, whether it's, uh, the sidewalk in, in front of, uh, the boardwalk, uh, you know, wherever it is, we're not saying that you cannot sleep there. We're saying you must be picked up and leave at a certain time. Moto's not, not following our, our bylaw, but we are covered constitutionally. And, and back to Counselor Moslin, as far as when moto got brought up, it was there to drop moto up. He was the one, that's what we were talking about. So, um, you know, I don't know how many people have read my email, but again, the question goes back, is this a COVID issue or is it a homeless issue? Um, and I'm, I'm not going to say it publicly, is if it's a COVID issue and it's 90 days, yeah, let's, and, and BFSS wants to provide a service, I say, let them, let them do it. Uh, there's a big open space in front of Hurley, lots of room to self-isolate, to distance. It's visible. That's what the RCP wants for this group is to see what they're doing. Uh, Boundary Family Services doesn't have to go anywhere. Um, we have partners in this problem, uh, regional district and the school board. And from what I understand is, we've got a, a member on the school board that is very interested in helping these people. She was very adamant that we needed a cold weather shelter. So I'm sure we have, uh, help at the board level to, uh, get the school board onsite to provide this spot for these people that need the help. And in 90 days, they can, uh, clear out. So we do have alternate locations. We are covered constitutionally. It's the liability that we still have at, at moto that's my concern.
Okay, Counselor Korlick has not had a chance to speak. And then we'll get back to the other, uh, counselors that have spoken already. Counselor Korlick.
Hey, I'll be, I'll be brief. First of all, you can't fence anybody in. So it's not, uh, so you can say, okay, you're not allowed to leave here. People can come and go as they want, and they are. I think we do more social distancing than the residents up there are doing. Secondly, um, uh, all right, the security person, Bud Alcock, said there's no more room for anybody else to go up there. Thirdly, I really have a problem with people saying, well, okay, we've got a group up here now, let's just move more trailers up there or campers. And just doing it without any thought that maybe they should have some, I don't know, discussion and say, well, is it okay if, if we do? They're going to be turned down, I'm pretty sure. But that's not the point. You just can't take it upon yourself to do that. And I find that really hard to bear. I can't do that, and I don't think anybody else should be able to either. And as to, um, I know this is, uh, it's crazy. I define, you find Trail and Nelson and some of these places are actually opening up, um, facilities behind their arenas or in a place such as that, that camps can be set up because they're easily serviced. So there's all things, things that can be provided right there. So that's maybe what we should be looking at. Rather than putting them in an unserviced, unprotected area like moto, which is an eyesore. There is no prevention from people coming or going, and you can't really put them in a locked-in compound. So I'm, I think that goes more for their civil rights than, than saying, okay, you can have a porta-potty now. I really, I'm having a, a really big difficulty with this whole thing. That's all, that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. And Counselor Moslin, then we'll go back to Counselor Krog. Counselor Moslin.
Yes, your worship. Yeah, no, I, I certainly agree that moto has really got limitations. Uh, the, the thing is, is right now moto, along with a half a dozen other places, both in our city and just outside of our city, are being used. People are congregating. Uh, they're congregating, uh, perhaps in unsanitary places. And then after they congregate, uh, just as Counselor Krog has pointed out, they might walk into town. So, you know, with the challenges to try to deal with the reality that's in front of us now. And that is, we've got these unsupervised camps, uh, people living in, you know, squall conditions, uh, who are not only, who are susceptible, you know, who, who may or may not catch COVID, but, you know, they are, uh, within our community. I, I, the long-term solution, I'm going to say it, as maybe Counselor Zelinski, bite the tiger, uh, is that if we're going to have any constitutional right to redirect people away from a shelter, we have to provide one. So the, the long-term solution is to come up with some sort of community discussed, negotiated, and publicly funded, probably hopefully by the province, long-time solution, permanent alcohol, permanent shelter. That, with that being the case, then we can start to redirect people. We have, uh, whatever constitutional, uh, basis to do that, uh, we need to come up with that solution. In the meantime, in 90 days, I do agree with Counselor Thompson. The reality is, these people do need, uh, uh, improved sanitation, uh, services. We, you know, uh, whatever Boundary Family Support Services can provide them. And, and let's recall that they did request that we table it. So I am assuming that they are refining their requests, that they too are trying to find, uh, a, a better way to, uh, to bring services to these people. I, you know, and it, whether it's a COVID issue or a homeless issue, right now, I am overwhelmed with issues. Whether it's a flood issue or a food security issue or a fire issue, I, heavens, it's all so complicated. You know, again, the only way forward, I see, is that we do start talking about it with our community. And I'm really hoping that's with council's decision to start to get this wellness thing going, we can start to grapple with these. Anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, Counselor Krog, been waiting. Thank you. Counselor Krog.
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, directing people and, and our thoughts of taking small, isolated camps and directing them all into one camp, uh, you realize that they're self-isolated because they don't trust or like the other groups. Each one is faction, some have hardened criminals, um, that prey on other people. And nobody's yet segregated them out so that you can help some, um, and not have to help everybody else. Now, schools are out, um, that's, uh, public space that, uh, Counselor Zelinski mentioned. That's in response to Counselor Thompson's, um, statement that there are no other options. Well, there's another option right there. Another option, if you want to protect, if you want to leave moto there and, and you want to protect Valley Heights, that's easy. Just tell B C Housing to enter into a lease for that property. The province can cut fire lines. The province can take all liability. And plus, I would also want them to put up a bond so that when it's over and done, that they clean up all the contaminated soil. So there's a, uh, there's an option to keep the, um, moto where it is and protect Valley Heights. There's an option to put them in front of, uh, or on, uh, other property. And, um, there's another option too, but I'm not going to just sit here for hours yapping.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, we've got a growing list of people here, but, um, Counselor Korlick, did you still have your hand up or did you mean to take that down?
Well, I, you know, I, one, uh, one last comment.
Yeah.
You know, we do have the learning garden, which, you know, it can't get any worse looking.
Okay, uh, one thing I do, I never did finish because I'm looking at my notes now.
Moving on, Counselor Krog.
Okay, why did the stay-safe shelter work better than the unregulated shelter? Because it had rules enforcement. Yes, you could come in and go, but your drug dealers aren't allowed in, your buddies aren't allowed in, you're not allowed to bring garbage back, and there was a lockdown at night. So that's why that one worked. Um, and yet we've got nothing for, for this one. So, yeah, that's why it worked. Oh, plus, remember when moto and the head, or the group moto came down and wanted to use city park? They are able and willing to pay for RV spaces. So that's where they should be. If you have an RV and you want to live in it, then you go to an RV park. Don't squat on city land and then pay to residents.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Zelinski, and then back to Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to address some of the, Counselor Moslin's comments is, uh, yeah, we, we've been talking about this for a long time. It's a homeless issue, whether you want to talk about COVID or not. So, um, and we got to try and handle it, get a handle on it for, for those people and so that we can get on with business. So what I'm going to suggest is that we actually get some definitions so that we know what we're talking about. Then we can find a place in the city where it can house something like this. So I think I'm going to put that on recording someplace and every month and play it.
I've memorized it. Thank you, Counselor.
So we can have that community discussion thing.
And Counselor Thompson?
Um, I just wanted to say that I didn't say there were no other options. I wanted to hear other options. And we have heard some today, and I think they, that, uh, they are certainly well worth looking into. Um, and, uh, uh, hopefully we can, we can resolve this problem, uh, in a, in a, in a humane way. Um, you're never going to stop people from coming into town. I don't care where they live or what they may have as, as an illness. Um, but you're not going to stop that circulation. So regardless of where you locate, uh, people, and there are those that, um, live in homes that could be at risk and also circulate in the community. So, you know, there's, there's just not one cut-and-dry answer to this whole issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, we, Counselor Moslin?
Uh, I, maybe, Mayor, you were going to do it. Do you want to, if I just moved a motion that, that council receives a report for information?
Counselor.
Is that appropriate?
I think it is. Counselor Korlick sends it. Further discussion on this? We've covered a lot of ground. Uh, we've given our, our staff a number of things to think about. And again, as Counselor Moslin said, hopefully with the wellness group, we're going to come back with a better idea of what the community is looking for and a, and a plan from Boundary Family Services. Am I correct in that assumption? We're ready to move on? And all those in favor of receiving the report? And thank you very much, Mr. Redfern, for, for doing this. All those in favor? Here we go. Okay, um, moving on, the next item of business is the electric utility rates verbal update. And again, Mr. Redfern is going to give us a verbal update on this matter.
So through your worship, this is a, a question that's, that's come up both through our, um, informational email and questions from the public and also, I think council's brought it up as well, where are we at today and, and what does the future look like? So there's been a lot of good discussion today, so I'll keep it very brief. Um, so at this point, council has waived late penalties on all utilities. So that's electrical, it's also water and sewer. So all late penalties are and have been waived. We've done some additional research as far as the electrical utility and B C Hydro and Fortis and their plans. And so what's happening is, uh, B C Hydro, um, with their residential customers that have lost their job or unable to work will be able to apply to receive a one-time bill credit of three times their average monthly bill amount. This amounts to 135 in savings approximately in apartments and, and 30, 335 for a single family. So essentially, as we dug into this a little bit with Alex Love, our, our contact through our electrical utility, uh, we're not really sure at this time how that's being funded, but we are sure that it hasn't been extended to us, the city of Grand Forks, as far as that same funding. So the next piece was Fortis, and Fortis is also offering residential and small, small business can apply for a customer recovery fund. And essentially, that's to receive, uh, or sorry, to defer a two-month bill payment and then essentially amortize it over the remaining 12 months after that. So they're not waiving anything, they're just deferring the payment of the bill for two bill, uh, two months and amortizing it over the next 12. Our understanding is the deferral is interest-free. And also, as we've kind of dug into it a little bit, it hasn't been extended, uh, to anybody other than residential and business. And so we wouldn't receive that either. And so really, where we stand today is our electrical utility, we end up paying anywhere from 200 to 300,000 dollars depending on season to Fortis in monthly usage. And that doesn't include any of our operational costs. Um, however, if council were going to go down a road where we were waiving, you know, or deferring, we would still be on the hook for that annual, or sorry, that monthly amount. So we'd still be paying 200 or 300,000 dollars plus operational cost. Another approach that some of the other municipalities have taken is really a letter to the province saying, you know, B C Hydro is, is receiving some funding mechanism, it appears, or some ability to waive this. And Fortis is deferring it, and really, we'd like to see an equal playing field and we'd like the province to step up and provide some form of funding mechanism that could be, you know, carte blanche for people who are finding themselves in a hardship situation. And so there are some other municipalities doing that, uh, and really feeling the same pressures that council is where individuals are, are looking for the same opportunity, but don't have. but don't have the same funding mechanisms as the other utility providers. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for the report, Duncan. And I see Counselor Zelinski and then Counselor Moslin.
Uh, one quick question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, do we know how much our load has dropped off since people have been staying home?
I do not have that information. I've heard that Wi-Fi and a lot of those Zoom and all those other mechanisms are up, but I don't know about the electrical utility today.
Can we try and get some handle on that? Because that's gonna be a direct hit to our bottom line if we're not bringing that revenue in. And I know the way we're shuffling around money, it looks like the revenue's a pretty big thing for us right now.
Thank you. And Counselor Moslin, you had your hand up and you took it down, did you mean that?
Yes, yes, Your Worship. I'm sorry, my head was up inadvertently.
Okay. All right, further on the electrical, I'll open this up for any other comment, Counselor. Seeing none at this point, thank you very much, Mr. Redfern, for the report. And we'll expect to keep up to date on any changes that are happening in the near future. A couple of people have their hands up, Counselor Thompson and Counselor Zelinski.
Um, I'm just wondering through your worship to our C A O. Would he like us to pass a resolution that we send a letter to the province in support and asking for the same considerations as the other munis?
So through your worship, I'd be very, you know, forward of council to approach that. And yeah, you have two options. You could either send a letter of support for some of the municipalities that have done that, or we could draft our own letters, you know, indicating the opportunity from the province to have a wide impact, you know, through a number of different homes as opposed to some of the targeted pieces they've already implemented.
And to Johnson, your wish there?
I would, I would put forward a resolution that we send a letter, and I would defer to our C A O as to what that letter should be, whether it should be in support of or a request from the city for the same consideration as Hydro.
And a second for that motion? Counselor Moslin seconds a motion. Before we get on, we have another speaker, Rod Zelinski. So all those in favor of writing that letter of support, carry. And Counselor Zelinski.
Uh, thank you. I forgot to mention this in our minutes from last. The motion read something that we were going to defer penalty payments until the fall, is what the resolution says. I see Juliet has some numbers there, so I guess my question is, when is the fall?
Utility rate increase, wasn't it?
Believe that was August 31st, and I thought that was amended to read that.
Yeah, so, sorry, Counselor, we're just clarifying. So looking in the minutes regarding the penalty until August 31st, was that the date?
Well, there was one in there for that, but there was also another motion that mentioned the fall, and I just didn't know what kind of timeframe the fall was.
Oh, yes, that was regarding an increase to the utility rates and that 3.5%. And we were gonna look at that in the fall. And we were gonna provide some information to council through the committee of the whole in order to kind of inform that timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, the wa, the wa, the waiving of fees is for sure till August 31st.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's something else there that said the fall, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, and we'll inform council as we go along what that looks like as we do our utility bill cycling, just so you're informed and can make some decisions at that point, whether we feel the need to change or stay the course.
Good, thank you.
Okay, have we effectively dealt with this? Anything further, Counselor? Thank you very much, Mr. Redfern. The next item of business is the, we have two bylaws, the five-year financial plan and the tax rate. In all of these, these two motions, we're looking for first three readings on these two motions. So we'll start with the five-year financial plan. And I'll pass this on to Juliet or to Mr. Redfern.
Sure, so we're just clarifying, it is, because of the changes in legislation, we do have the ability to do the three readings and the adoption is what we're asking for today. So we'll let Juliet maybe lead off on the financial plan. We know the council has been through this a number of times, so we'll keep it very short and sweet for you.
As usual. Yes, so since we originally went to committee of the whole with the first draft of the financial plan, we had, we had the tax increase of 4% and the revenue and the utility increase, 3.5% included in that. That's gone now because we had the resolutions. This current financial plan now reflects the 2% tax increase, and it has put off the increase in the utilities until later on in the year. I've also factored in the loss of income due to waiving of the penalty runs on utilities. So that's another reduction in revenue. It's detailed in there how much the amounts are, so. And we also, we had discussed before that we had some savings in operations that we would use to offset that, so we've done that with this financial plan.
Okay, Counsel, to move this forward, can we have a motion for the first three readings before we go to final reading? Can I have that motion?
Still moved?
Counselor, Counselor Krog and Counselor Korlick. This is on the table, Counselor Krog. You're muted, Counselor Krog. Okay, we have a couple of speakers.
Neil, we can't hear you.
Chris, Counselor Moslin?
Sorry, Your Worship, I, we still can't hear Counselor Krog.
Well, he's waving, I think it's night language.
Okay, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
Mayor, I know we just passed a motion for the first, oh, we're sorry, we've put out a motion for the first three readings. I just a question to staff, and I guess the, you know, the goalposts have changed so many times in the past two weeks, and I'm having a hard time keeping track of it. Has, has the requirement for the May 15 deadline of the annual report and the financial plan been changed? I thought it had been moved back by the province, am I correct in that?
We'll ask Juliet.
Through the mayor, no, those dates haven't changed. We still have to adopt our financial plan and our tax rates bylaws before May 15, which actually means May 14 is the date that they set, so. So we're still on schedule, we have to meet those deadlines.
Annual report and S O F I report?
Those were extended, but we're aiming to have them done.
Well, I guess that if that's the case, I would still use urge caution. I, I, I really hesitate to give the final reading at this meeting when who knows what's gonna happen in a week. You know, if the deadline's gonna be pushed back, or the province is gonna offer more money, especially with the electrical rate business, a little apprehensive that we might not have an electrical surplus. Anyhow, that's my, I support the first three readings. It's just that I'm still having a hard time with the final reading being today. I know we can do it, the rules are okay, but I just urge you to a little caution.
Okay, and if one of us is for the first three readings, and I have Counselor Zelinski and then Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't think, anybody raise their hand that wants me to talk about budget and how we can do better? Yeah, probably not, you've heard me before. But going to that, to the community charter and the dates, and especially the penalty of 10%, I would hope staff would give some thought to having our own tax scheme, as stated in the community charter, where a 10% penalty, I think, is pretty hefty. But I think we can do things on our tax collection side that might help people if we actually follow our own path compared to the province. So hopefully you'll give some thought to that, Counselor.
Thank you. And Counselor Thompson?
Uh, yes, to address Counselor Moslin's concern, I will support passing the budget and giving a fourth and final reading today. We all know things can change, and the budget can be amended to accommodate those changes. But we really need to move forward so that staff can get on with doing their, getting these notices prepared and out the door. And secondly, with respect to the 10% penalty, in reading Juliet's or the CFO's report, I was not aware that if council were to choose to alter the due date as provided for in the charter, it's up to the taxpayer to choose whether they want to avail themselves of the changes or if they want to stay with the due date of the first working day after July the 1st. So, I mean, I, I also understand that the province, the ministry, may be considering extending the due date to September. And if our CFO could speak to that, I would, I'd be interested. Thank you.
All right, through, Mr. Redfern, do you want to comment on that, Juliet?
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll send that over to Juliet. And really, a lot of this just came about Thursday. But it sounds like as far as, it's the difference between remittance and tax dates. And they're really saying, your tax dates are the same, you just don't have to pay a remittance for school district till later. Go ahead.
Through the mayor, so what the province has done is they have delayed the due date on classes four, five, six, seven, and eight, which is basically the major industry, light industry, business and nonprofits. But they, so they've pushed that due date, or they, I guess, left the penalty, or pushed the penalty date back to October 1st. So now, instead of having to pay that and by July 2nd, otherwise face a penalty, if they pay it out between July 2nd and the end of September, they all have no penalty. But they haven't done anything for residential. They've also given relief in the form of the school taxes to those same classes. So in some cases, I know, I just got the report this morning, so I don't have it all memorized. But I know that the impact on major industry was effectively 0% mill rate on the school tax, and then varying rates with the other classes. But again, nothing, not, nothing for residential. And the reason for that is that the province, I think, feels that the resident, that there's other forms of relief that are available from the federal government and, and I guess the province too.
Okay, thank you. And we are voting on first, second, and third reading. Counselor Zelinski has your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff. Do we know what our usual uncollectibles are on property taxes for the year?
Through the mayor, yes, actually, I do have that information. And actually, I could probably throw in a few other statistics too. So at the, as a percentage of our total tax revenue, the number that incurs the late penalties in 2019 was 8.4%. As at the end of the year, including, sorry, not, the taxes that are unpaid as a percentage of the total revenue is 3.7%. And then we also have about 5% of utility billings that transfer to taxes. And so we're still outstanding at year-end.
So at 3.7% on 4 million, what's, over 100,000?
120.
Yes, so current, yeah, 139,000 is the number.
Uh, because I'm very concerned that that isn't gonna double or triple, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion on a fourth, second, and third readings for the five-year financial plan. All those in favor? Opposed? Do we have an opposition? Was that, you just laid Neil on voting there? He's signaling the yes, everything's good. All right, and so can I have the motion for the bylaw, final reading of this bylaw? By Counselor Korlick. And further discussion on this matter, Counselor Krog? What does that mean?
Counselor Krog, you're muted.
All right, I'm assuming, nothing is important. Okay, and so the motion is on the floor, final reading of the five-year financial plan. All those in favor?
Mayor? Sorry.
I'm sorry, we had Counselor Moslin at the last minute there, I missed it.
I, I, I guess I should have waved my hand more.
No, I didn't see you on the.
Anyhow, sorry, sorry, Mayor. Again, I, I know we do have a meeting on May 11th scheduled, which is actually, I think, three weeks on my calendar. And we could still, at that meeting, give a fourth reading. I just, again, I, I'm opposed to giving forth a reading at this time. Not that I'm opposed to the financial plan, I just that, this sort of thing is usually rock solid. The dates are ascribed in law, everybody knows what everybody, who writes who a check for what.
Well.
I'm urging caution because nobody knows all that stuff right now, for sure, or what's gonna happen in the next two or three weeks.
I'm in support of Counselor Thompson's comment that this is a movable feast, that we have opportunities to change our financial plan. We have all kinds of freedom here to do that if the need arises, so. I am for the final reading today.
Through your worship, we typically, just talking to Juliet, we typically amend this in the fall to capture all the changes that have happened throughout the year. So it's fairly normal that we amend this at least once, if not a couple times, it sounds like.
Counselor Moslin, try to, you know, to soothe some of your concerns there that this is not written in stone, but is, you know, something we can modify.
Okay, Your Worship, that is reassuring, but I, I, you have convinced me to support it. But, you know, I, the crystal ball's a bit foggy here.
It's with caution, your support is with caution. All right, ready for the question? This is the final reading of the five-year financial plan.
Counselor Zelinski has his hand up first, sir.
Counselor Zelinski.
Yes, just to clarify, City Hall Council can amend the five-year financial plan on the expenses. It's the taxpayer that'll amend the revenue part for us. And that's the part I'm worried about, is I don't know if enough people will be able to pay their taxes. So this idea that we can change the five-year plan, yeah, we can, but only on the expense side. That revenue is gonna be done by the other.
All right, so we don't have control over all of our revenues, you're right. Ready for the question? This is the five-year financial plan, all those in favor? Opposed? One with opposition, Counselor Zelinski, motion is passed.
I was hoping you were gonna be with me, Chris.
I'm sorry, Counselor Zelinski, I, I don't know. I agree with you, and as I said, I really, there's so many of those up there, I just can't. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Mute, you can, yeah.
I'm unmuted this time.
You are this time.
And those weird hand gestures were, I don't know sign language. It was like my computer's broken, I don't know how to unmute. It was like my computer's broken, I don't know how to unmute things. So, um, anyways, one of the things that's happening, that the government, federal government is putting a lot of funding out there and the provincial government. And people are, um, being supported, right? At, as best. Now, a lot of people fall through the cracks, but some people, if they thought they had a chance to defer taxes or pay, they would without realizing that you should always try and pay everything that you possibly can now and not take the, the, um, easy way out sometimes because it can come back and bite your tiger's butt, as somebody said earlier.
Thank you, Martha Stewart. All right, and, uh, moving on to the 2020 tax rates as our next item of business. And can I again pass this back to, uh, Mr. Redford?
No, no, your worship, there's a third resolution with the allocation of the surplus.
I'm sorry, I couldn't have that on my. Hold on a second. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I just didn't go down far enough on the screen. Yes, the council directs staff to allocate 810,000 of the budgeted 2020 surplus from the electrical utility to general water sewer capital reserves in the amounts of 600,000, 50,000, and 160,000 respectively. Can I have that motion?
I will make that motion.
Councillor, uh, Crogg seconds it. Councillor Thompson makes the motion. So on the floor for discussion is the allocation of the surpluses from electrical. And councillor Zelinski was first up and then councillor Thompson. Councillor Zelinski?
Yeah, I, I do realize this is just a numbers game back and forth, but, um, but this isn't, our, our policies and our bylaws don't, don't support what we're doing here, so. Just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Well, I was going to say that this is, um, again, this is a moving target, um, and a subject to change and amendment. But based on the, on the budget that we've just passed, this allocation is, uh, in line. So, uh, I will be, of course, supporting it.
Thank you. No further questions are showing and I'll ask further question. All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Zelinski, thank you. Motion is carried. And moving on to the, uh, 2020 tax rates and again, um, back to, uh, Mr. Redford and team.
Chairman, we'll, we'll flip this over to Juliette. Essentially, council has two options in, in front of you for the proposed tax rates. These tax rates obviously align with the financial plan and are the, you know, one of the primary funding sources for it. And, and really the two options are, uh, I, you know, applying the, um, increase in revenue across all taxes equally or taking more of a strategic approach and reflecting some of the non-market and market changes that have occurred. And I'll leave it to Juliette to explain what those are.
So, um, through the mayor, yes, so first of all, I should just mention that this, this is, um, a recommendation to bring this for all, uh, three readings and adoption on the May 11th, um, meeting, which is pretty much, uh, our deadline for getting, for getting the tax rates passed, so. Um, so yeah, so what I, what I did was that this, this option that I'm recommending, um, it, it does factor into, uh, take into account the, um, the non-market change, which is the growth in the, in the assessment base. And it actually, rather than distributing that, the benefit of that growth across all the property tax, uh, property classes, it, uh, it gives that benefit back into the classes where the, where the growth is, which is the residential, uh, minor, mountain, light industry and business. So overall, the, um, the mill rate for those classes is a little bit lower than it would be if we just even did, uh, did that adjustment across all the, the classes evenly. So, um, the major difference here is actually in the major industry class. So it's the, the total revenues, um, are about 831,000 in that class, which is about 10,000, nine or 10,000 more than, um, than the previous year. But, um, it's, um, and it's a bit more than, than in the other, um, in the other, uh, alternative, um, calculation below.
And just a quick question, will, and through some of the provincial initiatives, those classes will see a reduction in other taxes?
Yes, they, they'll see that, the, the reductions in the school tax that I mentioned previously. So, so that could be quite, it, it could be quite significant depending on the assessed values in those classes.
Okay, so councillor, uh, the recommendation here is to move this forward to, uh, May 11th for three readings and final reading on that date. Uh, asking, uh, Mr. Redford, do you need some direction here in terms of council's thinking about the distribution of that?
Yeah, and so through your worship, we're going to bring that bylaw back to on May 11th. So that is very near our deadline, so if there's any changes, we need to know about it now so we can make those adjustments.
Councillor, do you have some opinions on the distribution of this?
Yes, I do.
Councillor Thompson and then councillor Zelinski.
Um, in my opinion, I would prefer to see the, um, the distribution across all classes of property. Um, I think our residential, uh, property owners are, are really feeling, um, uh, being put upon, I guess, for lack of a better word. Um, and although it's, uh, it's not that significant, um, I think it shows, uh, good intentions on, on behalf of council.
Just, uh, just for clarification, councillor Thompson, under the recommendation, that would be the lowest mill rate for residential, the alternative would be higher?
Yeah, I want the lower rate for residential.
So that would be what Juliette is recommending?
Yeah, that's what.
Okay, councillor Zelinski?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. On a, on a, on a similar, uh, question, um, to staff again, was the weighting on each different class looked at to see whether or not, uh, shift of the tax load has changed per, per class or that we could shift something, as councillor Thompson said, uh, away from residential enough and onto a, a different class?
Yeah, so that's exactly what we've done, councillor Zelinski. We have taken into account, um, the market and non-market change. And, and groups or classes that received higher changes receive less adjustment as a result of the mill rate. And so it was a balanced approach and that's the recommendation. Whereas the alternative doesn't look at any of that and just applies it equally among all classes. So the recommendation is to account for and to factor in some of those changes in balance.
Yeah, I guess my question is, did you look at the, the, uh, the weighting of the tax bill on major industry, light, light industry, utilities, uh, as far as to see whether or not they could take a little bit more of the tax load than the residential?
Um, through the mayor, well, that, that's part of the process of doing this overall. Um, but the, the, the big thing that's changed, um, in the last few days is this reduction in the school tax. So, and because this report had to be done a couple of weeks ago, uh, we, we were unaware of those changes. So, um, so there, there will be, I mean, there will be a reduction in those classes under this, under this, um, approach, though, um, the, you know, the residential is, does benefit with the recommended option as opposed to the alternative calculation.
Yeah, and so maybe I'll jump in a little bit and, and help out. Ultimately, we're looking at the municipal taxes and we may be showing a, a couple of classes going up, but because of the information released on Thursday, their overall tax bill should go down uh, as a result of provincial changes. Is that correct, Juliette?
Yes, yeah, in the, yeah, in those classes.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Maclennan has his hand up. Muting.
I'm, I'm quite impressed with the CFO's ability to predict what the provinces did. Uh, I, I, I would support the, um, recommended, uh, calculation, uh, rather than the alternate one. Uh, I think we've, we've heard from, that classes four, five, six, seven, and, four, five, six, and seven, I think, maybe eight, uh, are going to benefit from this, uh, dropping of school tax. Uh, but the residential class isn't. Uh, got me, that might change in the next few days too. Uh, but, uh, anyhow, so that's why I would support the recommended calculation at this point. Thanks, Mayor.
Can you move the motion then councillor to, um, move this forward to May 11th for a final decision?
Uh, certainly, Mayor.
Can I just, okay, clarify, please? Um, from the CFO, is your recommendation the alternative?
Uh.
Just slide down, Cap.
Uh, through the, through the mayor, uh, no, my recommendation is for the first calculation there. And that's the one that I've actually included in the draft bylaw.
Okay, so, so that, that does give a little bit of a break into residential.
That's right.
And did I have a stand-up there from councillor Crogg? Was that a second or councillor Maclennan's motion?
Correct.
Correct. Any further discussion on this matter? This is moving it forward to May 11th. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. All right, that brings us to, uh, questions from the media and public. Did we have anything that, that has come through, uh, from the media or from the public before we go to in camera?
Yes, you do, actually. Uh, just give me a second here, I'll, I'll get up. Okay, you have one question from the public, from Facebook. It seems that there is a misconception that the GFSSAG is done. The fact is that the committee adjourned until further notice due to COVID concerns. Why is the GFSSAG being bypassed with regard to the discussion regarding COVID-19 planning, et cetera? The GFSSAG was formed with the intent of providing for community input with regard to social service planning and delivery. What then will community representation look like with the previously defunct and now seemingly resurrected Wellness Committee? That's the question.
Okay, and, and I would acquiesce to councillor Maclennan or Thompson on this matter. Who sits on that committee can either, you comment on that question?
Uh, you know, and, well, the question is, uh, you know, why wasn't, why wasn't the whole thing just put before the Social Services Advisory Group? Well, yeah, that was my question too. Uh, that, that group was in place, uh, and it had community involvement and the press came. You know, uh, it was great, I thought, let's just go with it. But no, I, I was persuaded that we needed to have a different, uh, a more higher level meeting. Uh, anyhow, I, I, I really, I really hear that and believe me, Mayor, nothing that council gets involved in stays private for long. Uh, my, my intent, and I'm sure councillor Thompson will share this, is that at the Wellness Committee, we, you know, well, ensure that there is public involvement. In fact, there wouldn't be much point in having it if there wasn't.
Councillor Thompson, did you want comment?
Yes, I, I think that's a very good question and one that I would like an answer to. Um, and so when, when they hold their next meeting and councillors, uh, councillor Maclennan and I are able to attend, uh, we will be asking exactly that.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to the, this, is there anything further? I, I, I see councillor Crogg has his hand up there and, uh.
Yeah, just in, in relation, I, I echo the sentiments, uh, in that, that question. It's just, this isn't the first time that this group, and I would say they were dedicated by all the people that are coming together, has been shoved aside, right? So this is the second time that that's happened. So I still think that, um, yeah, it was a mistake, the same.
Okay, well, we'll see if those, uh, can get some answers to that as we move forward with the Wellness Group. Uh, so thank you very much for the question, whoever sent that in. And, um, can I have a motion under section 90 to go in camera?
Les, is there, just a second, Mr. Mayor. I, I think, uh, is there another question, Les?
Let me just check. I don't see any.
No, okay, good. It sounded like, um, so the, in regards to the in-camera resolution, uh, is there any other? Uh, we, we have to, we have to amend the resolution slightly and add, add, um, item K to it regarding, um, uh, the discussion that councillor Zelinski would like to have in, in camera. Um, is there any other items that, that we need to add to the resolution?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, okay, I, I was going to propose some, uh, additions to the, uh, in-camera meeting, but I, I, but is it more appropriate to do that within the meeting?
Uh, I, I.
Yeah, unless, unless.
I really think so.
Well, I need to, I need to know, we need to know now to make the resolution in, for the right items for the in-camera meeting, so.
All, all, all of, all of my concerns had to do with legal.
Okay, so we, we need to add that then, which would be, um, what is it? Uh, I or something like that? No, G, litigation and potential litigation. Yes.
Uh, thank you, if, if you could, that would help.
All right, so we need the motion to stay that. Can we have that motion? Councillor Spoodley, councillor Thompson, that is it. So this is to go in camera with the understanding of the items that we're going to face, uh, that are consistent with section 90. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. All right, pretty good for a, is that a four-hour meeting?
Can we have a five-minute recess, please?
No.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually going to need a couple of minutes here so that, uh, Les can, uh, disconnect and, uh, and, uh, step out. So yes, if, uh, Mayor, if you can, uh, give us, uh, it's 5:52, let's say 6 o'clock.
Certainly. I, I'm just wondering, just in terms of following rules, did we have to adjourn our other meeting?
Uh, we'll actually do that following, following the in-camera because. Well, no, following this resolution, we would have to adjourn this meeting and then we go into an in-camera meeting. So, yes, you would have to adjourn this meeting now, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I thought we should, all right.
Yeah.
Councillor Crogg, adjourn the meeting.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.